All right, so at 6:01, we will call the meeting to order. All right. So we do have a lot of people here tonight. So just right off the bat, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what school board meetings are like, and these are meetings in the public, but they are not public meetings, and so maintaining order so that the board can get their work done is really important. We will have some comments from the public during the meeting for those who have signed up beforehand, but otherwise...
Can you speak louder? Even here, it's hard to hear.
Sure, absolutely. How is this? Is this better?
Good back here.
Okay. So if you do have questions or something like that, the board, this isn't a back-and-forth with the people who are watching, so you are welcome to email us afterwards with your questions that you may have for anything that's been discussed at the board meeting, but we will not be discussing it during the meeting. All right, so with that, Stephanie, can you take attendance?
Becky Beisel?
Here.
Brian Davis?
Here.
Lisa Hadine?
Here.
Scott Gergen?
Here.
Stephanie Malm?
Here.
Dave Pembel?
Here.
Kelsey Waits?
Here.
All right, first on our agenda is a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any dis... Yes?
Can we make an adjustment to that to move to limit the public comment for a total of 15 minutes? With each of the seven, people allowed two minutes to discuss their point.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
What is it set to at the moment?
There is nothing. The board in policy can limit discussion time. We only have seven people set to speak.
So if we give two minutes? I think two minutes may be insufficient. What do you suggest? I would suggest perhaps four to five.
Speak up, please.
Everybody speak up. We can't hear even to the chairs here.
If you're standing up there, there's a speaker back here. You might be able to hear better.
Okay. Is there more discussion?
I think four to five would be appropriate.
Okay, I amend my motion to make it five minutes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, so first, we can vote to approve the amendment.
So moved.
Okay. And now, is there, we have a motion on the table to approve the agenda with the amendment. Oh, sorry. All those in favor of the amendment change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, and now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next up is approval of the minutes from the July 28 regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So we're at recognition of visitors, so thank you to everyone who has come out tonight to be a part of our board meeting, to watch us here. Public comment at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the school district to address the school board. After being recognized by the chair, which is myself, each individual will identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. Individuals will also state whether or not they are a District 200 resident. The Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comment about specific student matters even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of a school board meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but when it relates to a specific student or to a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. The school board will strive to give all district residents an opportunity to be heard and have complaints considered and evaluated within the limits of the law and this policy and subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Please understand that the board will not directly respond to your comments, but we invite you to follow up with individual board members by appointment. Tonight, we have seven speakers who have submitted the public participation request as of 6:00 PM on Monday. We will allot 35 minutes to hear comments from the public this evening. Each individual will have five minutes to address the school board. Becky, right there, will be keeping track of time and will hold up a yellow sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left. I will call each speaker up to the table and notify the next speaker as well. At the conclusion of the five minutes, I will ask the speaker to finish up their sentence and return to their seat. I will then call up the next speaker. So we will do this in the order that we received the speaking requests, and so the first speaker tonight will be Mike Reese, and the second speaker will be Joseph Staffel. Okay. We'll have you test the microphone first to make sure it's...
Hello, is that working?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Mike Reese. I'm a parent of two kids, married over 20 years and a veteran. I am representing myself, and I am a resident of Hastings. I wanted to first state with a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm against masks, and I have some stats and laws on why you shouldn't and can't enforce them. Almost 70% of Hastings residents have a college degree. Do you not think that we are not educated enough? Do you not think that we are smart enough to make our own health decisions for our own children? Did you not forget that last year, our children were told to not wear Halloween costumes to school? You know, the ones with the masks? They weren't allowed to wear them. Masks should be a parent's decision, not a school board telling how to, "My child should be involved with their health." Masks are meant to be a prevention tool and not a medical treatment. However, Minnesota law 607.735 states for concealing identity. A person whose identity is concealed in a public place by means of a robe, mask, or other disguise unless religious, entertainment, protection from weather, or medical treatment is guilty of a misdemeanor. Who, oh, apologize, therefore, anyone wearing a mask that doesn't meet those requirements is guilty of a misdemeanor. Who is responsible for our kids while in school? Minnesota law 626.556, Section 3, Subdivision 17, states having responsibilities for the care of a child, such as the teacher, school administrator, or other school employee or agent. Do masks restrict breathing in any way? Minnesota law 626.556, Section 3, Subdivision 18, Paragraph C5, states child abuse as unreasonable interference with a child's breathing. Subdivision 18, Paragraph 9, Section 2, states other substances that substantially affect the child's behavior, motor coordination, or judgment that result in sickness or internal injury. Both are defined as child abuse. Did you know there are only 19,000 active COVID cases in the entire state of Minnesota right now? Out of over 5 million people, 19,000. There have been three children under 18 that have died from COVID in a year and a half. Three. 340 kids in the entire United States have died from COVID. 340. We have over 80 million kids in the United States. Mold, let's talk about mold. Mold, per the CDC, is 1 to 3 microns in size. COVID is about .1 micron. Average is from .06 to .14, so we will use the average of .1. Mold is therefore 10 to 30 times larger than COVID. Yet, the CDC says for mold, if working with mold for more than four hours, you should be required to wear a half-mask or full-mask respirator. Over four hours. NIOSH-approved respirators are not designed for children. Kid deaths from the flu. In 2017 to 2018, there was 188 kids that had passed away. 2018 to 19, there was 144. 2019 to 2020, there was 199. And this year, there was one. One child died from flu in '20 to '21. So why is it so low? The highest rates that we had for COVID and hospitalization was during masks. Where are our contamination bins to hold all these hazardous materials that we have for the deadliest virus in history? We should have bins to put all these in. We should be in full hazmat suits since the death count was 200 times higher the previous year. Is that my time? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so after Joseph speaks, the next speaker on deck is Melissa Milner.
Thank you, members of the board, for the time and for your service to our community. I come here representing myself as a parent of one recent graduate and two current students of ISD-200. And I'm a microbiologist. I'm a scientist, and literally infectious disease is in my job title. Job description, sorry. Like school board, I can say science is a political. It doesn't, the scientific method does not care how badly I want my hypothesis to be proven out. The data is always the data, and the data should support and be relevant to the conclusions that we're making. If I'm planning a picnic tomorrow at Spring Lake Park, I'm not using a weather report from July. We should be using the most current and recent case rate data to support the decisions that we're making because it most accurately depicts what's going on in our community right now. Vaccines are the best line of defense that we have against this pandemic. First shots went into arms about a year ago, and the data has been overwhelming that it helps prevent the spread, keeps people out of the hospital, and most importantly, keeps people from dying from this disease. Dakota County boasts a 71% vaccination rate, but this number is misleading because it is calculated based on those who are eligible for the vaccine. Now, we're talking about a student population, a significant portion of which are not eligible to be vaccinated. So in reality, we should be considering a total population vaccination rate. If you take all the ZIP codes in ISD-200 and you calculate a total population vaccination rate, it is barely 53%. The current wave that we see right now that's being driven by the unvaccinated and Delta variant. This underscores why our next best line of defense, masking, distancing, test, trace, and isolate are so important. Now, Mike, thank you for your service, and I understand personal choice and personal freedom, but I think sometimes we forget why we even have those. It's because of the generations that came before us that were willing to understand the importance of the greater good above oneself. So sometimes it is just really important that hard things are the right thing to do. My family and I support masking for the 2021-22 school year in accordance with CDC regulation or guidelines, and I'm proud that my family supports me on this, and I think it, our community depends on it, our teachers depend on it, and most importantly, our students depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after Melissa Milner speaks, the next speaker will be Carrie Tate.
Hi, my name is Melissa Milner. I'm a mother of four and a chiropractor specializing in pediatric care. I am a District 200 resident. Did you know the SARS-CoV-2 virus particle size is 40,000 times smaller than the cross-section of a human hair? You tell me whether a bandana is going to stop that viral particle from coming through. Common sense needs to come into play here. I sent you a nine-page letter full of studies and graphs proving masks don't work. In fact, in states with full mask mandates, COVID rates were actually higher than in states that gave individual choice. The research tells us the only masks that might possibly offer small levels of protection are professionally-fit, hospital-grade N95s due to the particle size I just mentioned. The cloth disposable and bandana masks are useless, and as it turns out, can be quite harmful. I noticed the gentleman speaker before me took his mask off, I don't mean any respect, but laid it on this podium. That grosses me out because in a Florida study, they took masks worn for only one day, one day, and found half were contaminated with pneumonia-causing bacteria, one-third were contaminated with meningitis-causing bacteria, one-third had dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacteria, as well as pathogens that cause yeast infections, Rocky Mountain-spotted fever, a parasite, and even a bacteria that causes Lyme disease, was found on masks that were worn for one day. I ask you, how many of these kids are trading out their masks regularly for fresh, clean ones so they are not rebreathing these dangerous pathogens? How many of these kids are using a different mask every day? How many of them just throw them in their backpack and put it back on for a week straight? How many of you hang it on your rearview mirror and put it on in every store you go in? Disgusting. We're adding to our health issues, not subtracting by using masks. There have been 4.2 million cases of COVID in children, and .008% have died. In a retrospective study of even these deaths, they found most were related to a more serious illness such as end-stage leukemia, intussusception, and uncontrolled diabetes. The researcher questioned whether any of the children were originally hospitalized for COVID or whether they came in with their underlying condition and tested positive for COVID incidentally. So based on death rates, I sent you a graph, I think it was just this morning, I apologize for that, but showing accidents, children's death by accidents, drownings, cancer, all of those are severely higher than children's deaths from COVID. So if you're going to mask our kids for an entire year, depriving them of oxygen, I suggest you figure out a different plan on how to get the kids to school because more of them are going to die from car accidents or busing accidents getting here. I also suggest you look at a way to put fences around every single swimming pool, lake, river, stream, and brook in this community because more are going to die from drowning than from COVID. Research is already showing mitochondrial damage from the imbalance between carbon dioxide and oxygen in mask wearers. Do you know what damage mitochondria leads to? Cancer is one biggie. Cancer. Are we going to trade a .008% death rate for massive cancer rates in our children down the road? Is that fair to them? We need to think big picture. Big picture. These are our children we're talking about. These are their growing, developing brains we're talking about, and depriving them of oxygen is not okay. We won't know the total consequences for a few years if or when cancer rates skyrocket, especially in our young children because they are the most, they're in the most metabolically active years of their life. We're literally depriving them of oxygen to save them from a .008% death rate. The other thing that has been brought up as a concern is what about passing it to teachers? What if the kids have it and they pass it to teachers? Do you know that they can't find instances of kids in classrooms passing it to teachers? Their viral load does not get high enough. Kids are strong, kids are healthy. And on that topic, does that mean I'm done? Okay.
Thank you, Melissa. After Carrie, the next speaker will be Melissa DeRose.
I'm Carrie Tate, and I have two kids in the district going into second and sixth grades, and I am a district resident. I've dedicated most of my career as a supply chain consultant to reviewing processes and implementing new company processes. So I've literally asked this question hundreds of times. Why do you do that? And not once in my career has the answer, because they told me to, been a sufficient reason for anyone to continue doing anything. When I get that answer, I look for the data and reasoning for that action and determine if it's viable. Right now, you're looking at, or I'm sorry, you are considering putting masks on our children for the next school year because they told us to. Currently, there is literally no solid scientific study that proves that masking our children reduces the spread of this virus. None. What is out there, however, is an abundance of information showing that masking is a very bad idea for the health and well-being of our children. Two weeks ago, I emailed each of you the following. Ten published studies showing that masks are ineffective. Dr. Ulsterholm's admission that cloth and surgical masks do virtually nothing to stop the spread of this disease. The substantial evidence of developmental, medical, physical, and psychological harms being done by masking. One of Europe's leading neurologists said this about masks. We know that the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. To deprive a child's or adolescent's brain from oxygen or to restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to their health, it is absolutely criminal. Oxygen deficiency inhibits the development of the brain, and the damage that has taken place as a result cannot be reversed. We are literally talking about brain damage to our kids, guys. In 2020, if you recall, the World Health Organization started recommending that healthy people wear masks. This was done right after the CDC did the same thing. The World Health Organization later admitted that they changed their stance because of political lobbying and not because any change in science. There's been a lot of mistakes made during this pandemic. Last year, the Minnesota Department of Health told us when public schools had to shut down and move to distance and hybrid learning. Meanwhile, private schools fared very well overall with full-time, in-person learning the entire school year. Our kids suffered greatly because of that mistakes, and I know our kids weren't the only ones. Parents suffered, teachers suffered, we all suffered through it. Now, the science on masks is showing that they are also a mistake. Only a limited number of mistakes can be made on our kids before it becomes unforgivable. Please don't follow the political science when it comes to masks, but follow the actual science. With so many potential harms for our kids, parents need to decide what's right for their family. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. After Melissa, the next speaker will be Michael LeBune.
Hi, my name is Melissa DeRose. I am a mom in the district. I actually have been subbing in the district as well for the past four years and have learned a lot recently that I didn't even know was going on. This, however, though, you as the district board, you've all continued to say that you're putting our best interests at heart for our kids, and you're not imposing contested morals, beliefs, and theories, that you're utilizing parent-community input as well as scientific data to support your decisions, but unfortunately, you're not doing any of that. Prior to last work session, you received dozens and dozens of emails from parents citing research and data. However, what was the amount of the information that was introduced into your work session? Zero. It was not discussed at all, and it was outright dismissed. Clearly, there's no one who's willing to share parent or community input for consideration and discussions. The board is supposed to be representing the community and not just imposing your own beliefs. So who up there is responsible and accountable for that in your discussions? Who is our voice? Honestly, I was appalled listening to the work session because of our elected officials' blatant disregard for their voters' efforts to be heard and included in the discussion. Your silence speaks volumes. You say you're using scientific data to make the call that these young kids need to be, wear masks to be protective, yet there's no reliable data that supports cloth masks' work, no data supporting that any sort of significant risk to children other than the harm it can do. And you also say, though, that adult staff is protected by vaccination and could use shields or masks if they choose to. You fail to mention the CDC data and trends you speak of from last year didn't actually decrease with implementation of masks or even very much between the hybrid, full-distance, or full-time, and you exclude any data that is very specific to children. You even said yourself that in-person summer schools saw no increase of COVID exposure. Unfortunately, you're continuously contradicting yourselves at every turn and actually not supporting any of the data that you say you're getting your guidelines from. The thing is, why do you keep saying things were probably done the same as last year? Why? Why should they be done the same as last year? We should not follow that same path. We know the government and CDC has applied us with a plethora of contradictory guidelines. We know cloth masks don't work in prevention of cases and instead may be causing significant long-term medical, emotional, and psychological problems. And we know that states that implemented mask mandates versus states that didn't saw no difference in the rate of COVID. We also know that we live in the United States of America where you still have the freedom to choose. I won't pretend to know your stories and your choices. You have every right to choose what's best for you and your children, and I support that fully without even needing to know what those choices or what your reason is. All I ask is that you give me the same respect in return. No one knows my story, my choices, my knowledge, my reasons, because they're mine and they're what's best for me and my child. It's my situation, and it is not for you to blanket, make a decision. It's not for you to decide, nor should I be denied public school education for my child because I'm choosing to do the best that I can with the information that I have. My fear is that your fear will guide your control. My fear is that you'll make policy on maybes instead of facts. My fear is that your fear will supersede the data, and you will again cover my child's face. My fear is that your fear will take away my freedom to choose what is best for me and my child, just as you should for yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, after Michael speaks, the next and last speaker will be Jesse Nowak.
Hello. My name is Reverend Michael LeBune and an ordained minister. I'm a disabled veteran, and I've spent the last year working as a chaplain in hospitals in the Twin Cities, specifically on COVID-19 floors. Heard a lot of conversation, there's obviously a lot of feelings here today about the issues at hand. the issues at hand. I understand I have my own feelings, too. I come to you not with speculation about what COVID-19 might look like or some YouTube video that I've seen. I come after spending a year standing with people when their families were away from them and I had to watch them die. But I'm not here to talk to you about being a chaplain. My daughter attends this school, I live in this district. I'm actually here to tell you a quick story about the day I earned my Purple Heart. I was alone in my room, the blast went off, and I was rendered unconscious. Three members of my unit ran under fire to retrieve me and get me to safety. This is in line with the Army values: Never leave a fallen comrade. This is also a perfect example of my Christian faith, the words of Jesus, who direct me and all followers of the Christ to leave the 99, to go for the one, to do unto the least of those among us, the most helpless, the most powerless, the immunocompromised, the most at risk, to treat them the way we treat our Lord and Savior. What I would propose to you today is that you make an online option for those least among us, that they can stay safe, that you take every precaution. This is in line with Army values, which represent the United States of America, and those values. This is for people like me, who are Christian and follow the Christ. This is amongst our highest values: To love our neighbor as ourself. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to speak. I'm grateful for how much everybody in here cares about our kids. My prayer today is that we'll be overly cautious. I ask for a mask mandate for every person. Trust me, in the hospital, everybody wears a mask, no matter how old they are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Hello, thank you for the time to speak to you tonight. My name is Jessie Noack, and as a Hastings graduate myself and now a parent of two Hastings students, I'm grateful every day for this wonderful public school that we have in our community. I applaud you all in your effectively managing our kids through some amazingly chaotic times recently, because the thoughtful strategies that you put in place last year helped keep our kids safe and supported our students in every way possible, even if it wasn't ideal. We know kids do better in school. Therefore, we must continue this thoughtful approach if we're going to keep our students and staff safe, limit COVID exposures, minimize absences, and hopefully minimize precautionary quarantines. As a community, we must use the tools that we have right now to protect our students. Tonight, I urge you to vote to make it mandatory for all students and staff to wear masks. Let's minimize the impact of COVID in our schools. Please follow the science and the recommendations that come from every single reputable health organization: the CDC, the FDA, the National Institutes of Health, and the American Academy of Pediatrics. Information and community impact of COVID variants and science change as quickly as we learn more. Therefore, we must remain adaptable and flexible. But more importantly, we must employ the strategies that we know work: Distance when you can, wear a mask, get vaccinated as soon as you're eligible, and stay home when you're sick. Now, I wish that we could count on all of our neighbors to follow these recommendations, but unfortunately, we can't. It's impossible for you all to make a decision tonight that's going to make everyone happy. That has never been more clear than during these stressful times. However, I ask that you please make your decision tonight based on scientific facts and not feelings, based on science, not emotions, and with the health and safety of our kids as your number-one priority. This situation is an opportunity to teach our kids important life lessons as well: how to be a responsible member of their community, how to show respect for others, and, most importantly, how to be resilient during tough times. We need to demonstrate these life skills even when it's not easy. Protecting the most vulnerable when given the power to do so is a privilege that you've all been given. I hope you use that responsibility wisely to help protect our kids with every reasonable measure you can. I also hope you fund additional science programs, because the level of unscientific comments coming from this podium tonight was frightening. Thank you for making hard decisions, because we're counting on you.
Thank you. So, thank you for all of those individuals who came to make public comments tonight. With that, we will move on to announcements and recognitions.
They're going to adjust the podium. We've got some staff coming up. What we wanted to inform the board of is how our summer school programming went, and so I've asked the administrators from the different buildings to give you an update on how each of the summer school programs went at the different levels. And so, right now, I'll turn it over to our high school and Mr. Mike Johnson.
Thank you. We're really pleased with how summer school went. At Hastings High School, we've offered typically four weeks of summer school, and this year we opened it up to six weeks of summer school. We also are a host site for administrators in training. So you recognize Maddy Wenneke as a Spanish teacher. She also was our administrative intern this summer. So she ran summer school from registration to working with staff and curriculum, as well as student completion. So she's also created the chart here. So Maddy, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you. So first, it was really awesome to work with such a great team this summer. We had 15 classroom teachers involved at different points throughout the six weeks. We had different administrators, Mike, and Chris, and Paul, and myself. And then we also had some awesome other people there for student support. Kel O'Leary works with us with communities and schools, and then Drew Cooper and Steve Peterson were counselors on-site with us this summer. Students worked through Edgenuity to do their coursework, which was awesome in a lot of ways. We had a lot of, they were all self-paced, so they were able to, you know, some of them progressed a lot faster than others, and then we could see their progress really clearly and share that with parents and families. Overall, students collectively earned 313 credits this summer, which we didn't know what to expect, but it was really fun to see. And I have just a quick chart of like the different six weeks, how many credits were earned each week. So the third week was the highest, and then the sixth week, a lot of students got their accredited at the end before the deadline. And a lot of students earned two credits, some students specifically earned six credits over those six weeks. So, yeah, super impressive. And we did give, students who were HOA during the school year continued doing summer school as HOA, so that made up about 22% of our summer school population. 77% of the students in summer school were learning in-person. And then on the bottom right of the slide, you can see that the students in-person were a little more successful earning credits. The, yeah, the percentage of earned credits or credits passed was a little higher for in-person than HOA. So, and we also did some fun things with student incentives and a couple dress-up days to make it fun, because it is summer after all, so.
Transportation was something new that was this summer. That was a big hit. When we look back the last few years, the most credits we've earned is 120. We knew that in the last year, that we were focused on trying to get kids caught up as best they can. We also changed our model. If a student did not pass, say, my chemistry nine class when they went to summer school, they had to repeat the course. We worked with individual teachers and individual students, so they never lost what they learned in the class during the school year. And then we determined what did they need to get mastery in that class, and it really was a fantastic change for, really for our entire school. So as we go into this year, the model of using Edgenuity, which is personalized online curriculum, in addition to a student never loses what they've learned, what do they need to get the pass, will continue, and we think it will be a fantastic change. Also, we're proud of Maddy. She did a really nice job as an intern, really got behind the scenes and saw what it was all about. So it was a good team. I don't think she'll do it again next year. Her internship will be over, but she'd be great if she could.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Questions for the high school? Otherwise, we'll move on to the middle school.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll pull up Steve Kovach.
They said they were going to come up with me, the elementary guys, but I'll do it by myself. So we started off the middle school by inviting students that were not very successful during the year, so we ended up targeting students. We don't earn credit like the high school. We don't say that too loud with kids, but they don't earn credits, they earn the grades. And so students that did not earn a grade in at least two classes were first invited. And then when that didn't really yield very many, we opened it up a little wider and let people sign up. So we invited around 120, probably more. We ended up with 60 participants. So we had five classroom teachers, five through eight in different subject areas. Joe Haas is sort of our lead administrator, but Mindy Tavernier and myself also participated throughout that July 6th to the 30th. So we kind of grabbed on to the charge of, let's try to make this a little different than it usually is, and decided that our focus would be creating and renewing those connections between students, with our building, with our teachers, and then also with their peers. So we did it all in-person, and the focus was providing those students with hands-on learning, hands-on learning experiences to build relationships, connect to our community, and then just get students excited about being at, learning at Hastings Middle School. So you can see some of the, we actually had, the first slide deck that we had was 37 slides, and we were told we only had one, so I cut and pasted as many pictures as I could in there of kids and some of the things that they got to do this summer. But through a math, science, reading, social studies focus, the teachers were charged with and had planning around, how can we connect that to experiences to get kids excited? And this is just some of the pictures that you see there, and I can share the rest with the board, because there's a lot of smiles, and we had a lot of things that they baked, they brought down to the office. They weren't always that good, but they were, but it was, no, they were good. But just following directions, problem-solving, measuring, balance, patience, cooperation, you know, turning on an oven, and what to do in terms of fractions and dividing things into equal parts, and they did activities in some science areas with carbon dioxide and nucleation and area and volume. And you can see some of the experiences listed on the bottom there: cooking, baking, they made homemade ice cream. But the cool thing was the field trips that they got to do. They really haven't, we haven't done that during summer school. It's been a lot in the past of like seat time, but they got to go out and see the Duke House, Lakeside Cemetery, they did etchings from the gravestones, the Vermillion Falls, Vermillion River, St. Croix River. They did water sampling from those rivers and compared that and talked about what that all meant. And then they got to go to the state, they haven't, they didn't get to go to the, we didn't do our field trip last year to the state Capitol and the Mall, so they got to do that, go to the state Capitol and the Mall, see the cathedral, and just some other things around the school. Maybe you saw them outside with their, they made paper rockets, the geyser. I don't know if I fit, I did put that picture in there, the red there, you can see it, and they're all just like screaming and yelling, and so it was, it was a great experience for our kids, so. Any questions that you have?
I think you did a good job squirming 30-some slides into one. I mean, well done.
I thought it was, I mean, I was, yeah, Joel was like, here's the slides. I'm like, no, we can't do that. We're going to do something different. Right on, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll bring up the elementary gentleman. You're up on your own, Paul.
Well, thank you so much. We had four great weeks of summer school at Pinecrest this year. We were able to have 14 classroom teachers, and Lisa Ponslet also taught music for our students. It was just a wonderful experience. We had a theme of, I'm hearing a little echo here. We had a theme of Lit Camp was our theme, so it was a camp feel to it, hence the paper campfire. It was great. We incorporated that theme with singing camp songs. The public library donated a book for every student, which is just great that we're getting books in the hands of kids. Also, like the middle school, we were able to incorporate a few different experiences. The Works Museum was able to come to us. Each grade level had a different theme, included light and kaleidoscopes, chemical changes, mini catapults, circuitry, just to come down, and that was so neat to see the kids leaving on those days, having made something, took at home with them. So incorporating that science component as well as literacy and math. We also were able to bring our students to Carpenter's Nature Center, our third and fourth graders. Our kindergarten first and second graders had an experience on-site with a group ironically named Campfire, Minnesota. And so it was great. They brought these skulls, they talked about animal behaviors, we had that outside in the field, and the kids just loved that as well. And then, personal favorite of mine was the Raptor Center, was able to come last week. And of course, the one day that it rained in all of July was the day that the Raptor Center came, but we were able to move inside to the great auditorium here at the middle school, and it was so cool to see the birds up close, and the kids really enjoyed that. And then, kind of a culminating event on our last day, our students were able to have a music performance, and you know, it's been a while since we've had a music performance. So every other day when they were in music, Lisa Ponslet would work with them, tying that literacy in with music, and then we had a performance on the last day. So that was a really neat culminating event. One other highlight that we've never been able to offer before as well, we were able to provide breakfast and lunch to students. Each day, we would serve over half of the students a bag and lunch that they would take with them. So definitely a great opportunity to connect that way as well. So it was a great month. It was so fun to have that positive energy back in the building, so. Any questions for elementary, summer school?
Thank you very much.
And we also had extended school year.
Our program kind of mixed in and happened at the same time that many of the other programs were happening. We had two rounds of ESY for our students with special needs. One of them was in June for our Stars program, which is our transition students, and they did a lot of amazing things. They were out in the community almost every day of their three weeks. They would practice, you know, pre-work skills, community engagement, they went to places like Walmart, I know they went to a farmer's market, so just to be able to put those skills that they've been, they've been learning into play. And then in July, we were at the middle school here and Pinecrest for our, the second session of ESY for our K through 12 students. And so all total, we had 13 licensed staff, we're licensed teachers and OT, speech, 19 paraprofessionals supporting our ESY programs. And then also, we had some of our special education paraprofessionals in the elementary rooms for summer school. And then we also had three student workers, high school students that came and supported our kiddos. So we had students from four years old to, to 21 in our programs this summer. There were a lot of, it was, it was a lot of fun and it was, like, has been reiterated. It was great to just have the kiddos back in person and feel the energy. Any questions?
Thank you, Tanya.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'll present a little bit later on, on items we're spending our ESAR dollars on and things like that. And summer school had an allotment of dollars from the federal government to spend. And so as you can see, for age four to 21, elementary, middle, high school, there was a lot of things going on throughout the district this summer with our kids and our staff. So I just want to thank them all for pulling off what they were able to pull off and give our kids the experiences that, that they were able to give them.
All right. Thank you very much. So we'll move into our items for discussion, beginning with policies that are up for a first reading. So the first policy is equal, is policy 102, equal educational opportunity. And so this one is, we have some changes revised by the MSBA model policy. Oops. Sorry, something's going on with my board book. Does anyone have any questions?
My only question, I held them upside to side and I didn't see substantive change. Is this one that we can move to adoption or does it require a second? Did you feel like it was substantive enough?
So the policy is staying close to MSBA's model policy. The correct names and contact information for our district have been inserted, but there's also a small addition added in order to tie this together with our other policies. And so because of that additional, it was recommended for a first reading.
So is that the link to policy 522? Is that piece that got added? Just to, just to call that out or articulate that more clearly? Okay. All right. That's all I saw different, but if it, if we need another reading, that's cool.
I would say it probably needs to go through just because.
Yeah. You should do it.
We changed, yeah, it's not just verbiage.
Cool. Thank you.
So other than that, are there any questions or comments that can be brought back to the policy committee? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to policy 213, which is school board committees. And so the reason this one came up is because the, the way the policy currently is didn't align with the organizational meeting changes we made to committees. And so this is bringing that in line with our current committees. So are there any questions on this policy?
I would ask the policy committee to consider if a legislative action committee should be added prior to the second reading, because we would anticipate, I mean, I feel like we've discussed that in work sessions, that that's a likely committee for 22. Just keep us in alignment. I understand we don't have it now and it's not, it didn't come out of our meeting, so just something to consider.
No, that's, that's a very good point, Lisa. So we meet on September 2nd, I believe. So, and, and you know, if this is going to be adopted for
Does it be adopted?
The academic year 21, 22, then if we're looking at bringing in that policy or that, that committee in January, it should probably be on here.
So that was only
One thing we could do is, we could, we could put it in there and then in parentheses, put 22 school year.
That's a good idea.
Or as of.
Yeah. We'll discuss that next week at our committee meeting. Yeah, next week.
I don't want to be constantly catching up. It'd be nice to get a step ahead of it.
Yeah, I agree. Any other questions, comments for the policy committee?
No, I was just going to support that idea. I think it's going to be very important to have our voice at the legislative session and be able to work towards some verbiage changes in some of the state statutes.
Yep. So the next policy for first read is policy 413, harassment and violence. And so the policy committee had discussed how sexual harassment claims and Title IX claims are distinguished. So in the case of a sexual harassment complaint, it would first go through the Title IX process and then reverts to a sexual harassment investigation if it does not meet the requirements for Title IX. And so this policy that is being brought forward uses MSBA's model with an addition in part six to clearly indicate that the claim first goes through the Title IX process.
I don't have it. Is there a reason it's not on?
The link is gone.
We're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our legal team also struck parts A and B from part seven, so I'll repeat that once the link goes back up, so you know where to look.
Do you want to just go to 521 and we'll come back?
Yep. So we'll go to 521 for now, which is student disability nondiscrimination. The policy was adjusted to insert Megan Miller's contact information as well as the acronym for ADA. So our current policy was not really based on MSBA's model policy, or it was not up to date with MSBA's current model policy. And so the changes have now been made to MSBA's model policy, so this is different than the policy we currently have on file. And so this is recommended for a first read. Are there any questions or comments for the committee on this one?
No, I don't see.
Okay.
413 is there now if you refresh it?
Okay.
Oh, no, it didn't.
Okay.
All right. So then now that 413 popped back up, we can go back to that, which is the harassment and violence. And so again, we had an addition in part six to indicate that the claim first goes through the Title IX process. And then our legal team had also struck parts A and B from part seven. Are there any questions or comments on this one?
So this, we did just adopt this one not too, too long ago originally, right? And now this is just, we just looped back to it because of reviewing the Title IX.
Well, so the last number we have on here is that it was revised in 2017. Is the date in the upper right.
Website, it said something like 2021 or January or very recently.
2020, there we go. Oh, yep.
But this just elevated, this just elevated because of that linkage to the Title IX reviews?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And because now we are, yes. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that was a curiosity question, more than anything else. Not that it didn't need to be done or that I had a question for it, but just what brought it back up so quickly?
Any other questions or comments to bring back to policy? All right, seeing none, we will move on to policy 522, which is the student sex nondiscrimination. So.
Yeah, no, 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 I got out of order when I hit refresh. I'm sorry.
So we added Kathy Mowen's name and contact information to the policy. The definitions within the policy come from MSBA. Changes have been made to this policy, including that certain information must be provided to both parties, the victim and the accused. Prior to this change, the accused did not have access to much information. We also clarified that appeals to decisions would be made to superintendent. However, decisions will vary based on what the grievance is and what the circumstances surrounding the grievance are. Kathy Mowen is working with the district to train individuals to take on the role of investigating the grievance. Investigations have to start within 24 to 48 hours and the entire investigation would be completed within 120 days.
So just to make sure I heard that correctly, we're, we're training some of our existing staff to lead the investigations.
Correct.
So we worked with legal on that to make sure that we were setting it up in an appropriate manner that met with the new guidelines?
Thank you.
Can you explain to me the relevance of the date that's in there, the August 14, 2020? That this applies to everything after that date? Was that the first adoption of this policy?
Where are you?
It is in section three, letter D.
Yep, section three, letter D. In fact, the date of this policy is August 14, 2020, and it applies to alleged violations of this policy occurring on or after August 14, 2020. I'm just, I'm not connecting.
What's the significance of that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know what the significance is. Do you know, Kathy?
That's the date that the law shoots. It implements the new Title IX.
Yeah.
So the date that it was implemented in the law.
Because this came from changes at the federal level. So, but then looking at that, we also do need to change that letter D to an E. We have two letter Ds there in section three.
It's the highlighted one.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So are there any other questions with this one? So policy 522A, this is the Title IX notification language. This is setting up Kathy as the Title IX coordinator for the district, making that clearly laid out here. Yep.
This is an all-new policy one, right? This 52A, 522A, excuse me.
522A.
Looking right at it. Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so are there anything coming up with that one? Guessing no. Okay. For the second reading, the first one is policy 203.2, order of the regular school board meeting. And so the committee had come back, we incorporated comments from the July board meeting, and the policy has been adjusted to move the public comment period prior to the call of order of the meeting. And the committee recommended it for a second read. So are there any questions there? And now as these ones are second reads, for any of these, we can make a motion to move them to an action item, to take a vote on them later.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. We'll see this one later. Next up is policy 206, public participation in school board meetings. So the committee adjusted the policy again based on comments made at the July board meeting. We also had further discussion about who was eligible to speak at board meetings and clarified the term taxpayer with local taxpayer to better indicate the committee's intent with who would participate. So are there any questions or feedback on this?
I had sent you a quick question. As you read section, and I did notice this last time we read it, I'm sorry. Section six, procedures for requesting to address board, and then under A, school board listening sessions. In a couple of the paragraphs, paragraph four and paragraph seven, it states a task for the school board chair that would happen at these listening sessions. So it seems to imply that the chair will be present at all listening sessions? Or, which I think is fine, but I don't think that fit necessarily what we talked about, which was we would try and make people available and maybe at some level of rotation.
Right. And that hadn't been the intent of the policy committee? And so what we can do is in section four, it can be changed to say the school board will recognize one speaker at a time instead of the school board chair. And in section seven, we can similarly say, the school board shall promptly rule any out-of-order discussion rather than the school board chair. And if that's a change we want to make, we can move this forward as an action item with those amendments. Those are minor amendments to it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we were all consistent on the intent. I mean, I understood the intent differently. It sounds like everybody, it sounds like everybody did. If there's not further discussion, I would make that motion to move this forward for an action item.
Move those changes.
With the two changes in paragraph four and seven, striking chair.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Oh.
I apologize. If we could go back and miss the discussion period, I thought we were discussing the amendment, not the movement to an action.
Sure.
Just, just one point in here, and I think we had talked about this last time, I'm curious. Under six, procedures for requesting to address the board, number three, in order to speak, the citizen must meet one of the following connections to the district, being a resident of the district, a family member, guardian of a student in the district, or a local taxpayer of the district. And that's where I said that since we receive our funding from federal, state, and local taxes, that I disagree with item number three. I think it should be opened up to, I, I would like to know their relationship to the district, if there is one. I think that's a valid question, but I don't think restricting it to people who are only local taxpayers to the district is acceptable.
Yes, I understand that, Scott. I do believe this was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McDowell, that this was a recommendation by MSBA or our lawyers, was it MSBA? To keep it local so that we can, we can hear from our community members, the ones that are directly impacted by the decisions that we make, to afford them the opportunity to speak. So that's, that, that was the basis for keeping in that particular language.
So by having this, am I precluding? If I were to amend this to say, if, you know, you're a taxpayer, you know, whether it be at the federal level where we receive monies, or at the state level where we receive monies, or at the local level, am I precluding someone from speaking by including that? Am I, am I stopping someone? Am I, because I didn't see in here where that was the case.
So I think if you open it up to people who pay local taxes, state taxes, or federal taxes, what that really means is there's no limitations on, on who speaks. And so our discussion had been that if we have a limited amount of time to hear from community members and to hear from the public, that the policy committee felt that we want to prioritize hearing from the people in our community, not from people who may come from outside groups, working to influence something that the, the school district and the school board is working on, was really prioritizing the voices here.
Right. And I can, I understand that. I don't think historically that has been an issue. I, I would still, I would still like to see that changed. I, I don't think that it, I think the likelihood of there being a situation such as that, so for instance, tonight we had seven speakers, five minutes each. so for instance, tonight we had seven speakers, five minutes each. I don't think that is an egregious amount of time for us to hear from anyone, whether it be someone outside our district or inside our district.
I guess my concern with that, Scott, is that we, I want to hear from our community. And if we have outside organizations that don't have that connection, are we giving the opportunity to our community to address us? And you're right, in past practice, it hasn't happened, but we are also in unprecedented times, and we don't know what could happen. I would like to reserve the right for our community members to take priority.
Okay, so again, I guess my question is, let's say I have 10 people and/or organizations sign up to present at a given board meeting. I'm not turning any of them away, correct? Whether it's 10, whether it's 13, whether it's 30, I'm not turning any of them away.
Under this policy, as it reads, you are. Because this is relative to a listening session, and somebody from policy, correct me if I'm wrong. But this is where we're moving towards a listening session prior to the meeting, where board members are available to hear a person speak in person. It's limited to five speakers, and then there's like a signup, like a signup process. And so, I mean, as we have all seen in the last couple of weeks, we're available to an infinite number of emails and phone calls and most kinds of things. But for the listening session, which is the process whereby we'll be hearing public input at a meeting, the discussion has been limiting it to five.
And I do think that's important to point out, too, that board members, our emails and our phone numbers are online to be contacted. And I know I've been contacted a lot over the last few weeks, and that includes groups from outside this district are also able to have our email addresses and send us their perspectives. But for that limited time of the listening session, that's where I see the priority for our community.
So how could we prioritize them? Other than, how could we prioritize them without excluding? Because I'm with you. I'd like to hear from those most affected in our district. Absolutely.
Well, could it be amended to say priority to speak will be given to citizens who have connections to the district as a resident of the district and something?
There's a loophole there, though, that everybody has a connection to the district in that particular verbiage, and I don't think we're going to be able to get around You know, one of the things that we could do is when they sign up to speak or when they come in, we have to know where they reside and their connection to the district. But then we run into, I would think that we could run into issues that were turning away groups or individuals that, at a federal level, want their issues addressed at the school board. I think it needs to be narrowed down to the local taxpayer, the people within our community. But I don't know what that, sorry, I don't know what that looks like in changing any particular verbiage to meet your intent. But I understand where you're coming from. Yeah.
Yep, and I completely, I understand your viewpoint as well here. How about if we added, if need be, if you wanted to call it an overflow listening session after the meeting? If need be. That way, I'm not limiting it to five. Anyone who makes an effort to be here that wants to be heard in person has that opportunity. Because again, in, completely understand, unprecedented times, we have a large group here tonight. But in my time on the board, I've, I can't recall a time that we've utilized the 15 minutes before the board meeting. So we might be arguing or discussing things that really are not going to matter a lot.
I would like to be prepared.
Fair enough.
So what are other board members' thoughts on this?
My thought is, you know, we're here representing our local constituency, and yes, it's important to consider outside agencies and individuals who want to talk about a subject. But I think for the listening session, that should be exclusively tied to the local constituents, the people that have a direct involvement with the school district, the schools, the students' education, and outside agencies or individuals or companies that wish to come in and talk on a certain subject. I think those things could be addressed by putting them to an agenda item and allowing that to proceed as an agenda item on a said meeting. I think we need, the listening session is very important to the people of the community, and they come first. Sorry, I, they're what drive the community, and we need to hear them first. I'm not, I think the point of outside agencies and going against some best recommendations from MSBA and some other folks, I think the loophole out in that is, okay, if there's an agency or an individual or a company that wants to come in and present on an issue, put them on the agenda for the said meeting and let that happen that way.
Yeah, I can, I can understand that point. I guess I wasn't thinking as much of the organization as just a taxpayer, the state of Minnesota, for instance, that just happens to live outside our district, but yet we are still consuming those taxpayer dollars, as is every public district in the state. But I like the idea. In my mind, it's not an either-or, okay? It's not a, I want to hear from the Hastings residents or the Hastings School District families. Absolutely, I want to hear from them, but it's not an either-or. It's not, well, I only want to hear from them, and everybody else, forget it. It's, I'd like to hear, if there's someone who's going to take the time to come here to speak with us, I'd like to accommodate.
In retrospect, we've had different, in my time on the board, we've had different organizations come in and be part of an agenda item on an evening meeting. And I think that's the way it works the best, myself.
That is true. We have had that.
Lisa, you look thoughtful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have a personal opinion about it, but I'm trying to listen and figure out just what is, what's everybody's intent. And I think, so my personal opinion, when I look at it, is, so we're going to do our work in public, that's what we're doing. We're doing our work in public. We do our work sessions in public and our committee meetings in public. And anyone, organization or individual, can contact us through our contact information that's available on the district website, which is widely, widely available. And if an issue arises that we want, you know, that there's a consensus to pick up, then we, then we process it, right? We run it through a committee, we run it through a work session, we maybe bring it to the board table, we do that. This request to address the board is, to me, is just one small component of hearing the public input. And it's, to me, it is people who pay taxes in the Hastings district and want to come and speak to whomever can be here. And it could be two, three, four, five, six, seven of us, depending on the night and our availability. And this speaks to that. So to me, it meets what I consider to be the intent of this method of communicating. I think if we're going back to something like whoever wants to come in on a given day, on a given meeting and talk, then this ends up going back into policy committee, right? And it, because we have to think about how does that look, and who gets priority, and how do you set up enough time? And do you or don't you constrain time? Right? Because this is, this is how people will speak to us in person.
And I do just want to clarify, because we keep mentioning local taxpayers, that this would be local taxpayers, but also parents, people who live in the district, and parents or guardians of students in the district. So if someone open enrolls and doesn't necessarily pay local taxes, they would still be open to speak here under this policy. If parents are divorced, say, and one parent lives outside of the district, but their student goes here, they would still be able to speak. So that doesn't limit that. For the community who's watching, who may be worried that this would, would limit that in some way under that, that aspect. So I just want to clarify that. Are there any other thoughts from board members?
Everything that I wanted to say was said. I want, I think that we address the local district, community members here, and if they really want to be heard, our emails, phone numbers are out there, and put it on the agenda, if, you know, come in and speak like it was tonight, you know? And we have that form that's a lot, if you want to speak at a forum meeting. And leave that extra 15 minutes beforehand for community members in our district.
Any thoughts?
Well, I'm on the policy committee, so the intent was, of course, to ensure that we were protecting the opportunity for our people to speak. So if somebody from Los Angeles wants to get a point across for some reason at our meeting, they can always go through one of our own residents, and that resident can communicate that information. I don't think that necessarily our community needs someone from, again, LA, coming in and speaking for them. They've done a great job to know speaking for themselves. And that's kind of why we wanted to insulate it that, the way that we did, is keep that from happening, so that someone who's just trying to get their five minutes of fame isn't utilizing our people to do it.
Is there any more discussion?
You've addressed my concern, so if, if, as long as we have an avenue for people to be heard, that's what I'm looking for. So we've discussed some different options here.
So Scott, do you want us to take it back?
No, I'm, no, I am comfortable with it, as we've discussed other avenues, so.
Okay. So with that, there is a motion on the floor to move this as amended with striking the term chair in those two sections, so moving that as amended to an action item for later. So with no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, this will move to the action item. So next is the 206A, the Listening Session Sign-Up Document. And so this would just be the document used for individuals to sign up before the board meeting. So are there any questions or changes that need to be made here?
There's the same change, there's in the, in the third paragraph down, it talks about the board chair. The school board chair will recognize, and that I would propose whoever makes the amendment to move this forward, if there is one, we strike that chair.
Okay.
And did we not talk about, word says email, I thought that was email slash address for folks that did not have an email? Wasn't that part of the discussion?
I don't recall that discussion, Dave, but I think we should definitely add that, if everybody's comfortable with that.
How about, rather, how about just contact?
Contact information?
Yeah, because maybe they want to give their address, maybe they want to give their email, maybe they want to give their phone number. Maybe they don't want to give any of them.
Maybe they have a pager.
I still have a pager for one.
Chris has two.
Do you look at it when you're watching your VHS tapes?
So maybe, maybe instead of email, it's contact information?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to move this forward with the amendments of striking chair and saying contact information?
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Policy 501, the school weapons policy, so we had talked about this one last month with some of the changes that were made regarding the use of tools and such in classrooms. Are there any questions or further comments on this policy?
Come in.
Okay. Is there a motion to move it to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Policy 502, the search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. Again, this was discussed last, at the work, last month for the first reading, sorry, and the changes come from recommendations from MSBA. So are there any questions or comments, concerns on this policy?
Motion this one to go.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. The next policy for a second read is Policy 506, Student Discipline, which we have spent a considerable amount of time on, and the district has spent a considerable amount of time on. There any concerns or comments on this policy?
Again, I just want to thank the team that worked hard over the last year to, to make this policy possible. I know a lot went into this, so.
So with that, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Student Travel and Field Trips Revisited. This is now no longer a second read for policy.
It's in the resource notes.
Yeah, it's in the notes.
So it's just under the agenda item?
It's not a link.
It's just.
Right where.
I have no idea.
Yeah, it's in the discussion items.
I thought there was one I could see or even remember or something. There is, but no, there isn't.
Has it made it?
Yeah.
I don't figure out how to show it.
Oh, okay. We're just trying to figure out how to show it.
I can't do this, but I can also do that.
Was it like, or something? Or does it have a stamp?
No, it doesn't.
Interesting. I had it on the same page.
Oh, I've got it on Lisa. I'm good having it on. I'm good having some of this.
Need some music.
Yeah.
Do, 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 do.
Yeah, that's the right music.
That's stressful music. I don't need Jeopardy. Some elevator music.
If you're a Jeopardy fan.
Thank you.
Refresh.
Nope.
I see that, looks like you modified it, but when I refresh, there's no modification.
Was there supposed to be an attachment?
No, I don't believe so, because it's in the notes portion.
Right, it's just the notes portion.
I think it's just in the notes.
Right, it's just the notes, right?
But the notes are public, so they should be visible. But they're not.
Let me see if I can. Okay. So on this one, if you remember, what we did last year in February is, as a board, you suspend all out-of-state domestic travel through August, so through this month. International trips, field trips, travel through August, a year from now. And then all domestic trips, starting next month, September 1, must include a COVID mitigation plan. And then finally, and I'm reading all this for the people in the audience, domestic and international travel trips will be revisited as a board discussion topic at the August 2021 meeting, which, here we are. So that's why this is on the agenda, is because when we made, when all of you voted, we said we would talk about it at this meeting. So doesn't mean you have to change anything, but here we are. I'll just open it up. It really is where people are.
So the reason we had restricted the international field trips was because of the uncertainty surrounding what was happening with COVID, and we didn't want families to get in a financial situation where they had purchased the trips and then those trips would need to be canceled because they do fundraising so far ahead of time for those trips. And so that's where that decision had come from.
And or being on a trip and having, and finding out that you need to stay.
Correct.
All of a sudden, you're sitting there and you're going to be there. Right, because that too would be a pretty severe financial impact.
So if we do nothing, we leave it as is for now?
Which would then open back up. Since we had suspended out-of-state domestic field trips through August 2021, if we leave that as is, that would be lifted now, I assume. And then.
International trips would still be off the table through a year from now, but domestic travel, it's opened up as of September 1, but it has to include a COVID mitigation plan. And that's currently in there.
Do we want to, do we want to go a year out? Or would we, should we revisit the international piece again, because those trips happen? They begin planning those, they begin for where it's applicable, they begin fundraising for those, they begin recruiting students to go on those, planning, working with, you know, various travel companies, et cetera. Should we revisit this?
When does the planning usually start, Scott?
Depends on one year.
Why don't we ask, Mike's still here.
Yeah, I've only been on the paying end.
I could see when you start to pay.
Mike, I think the question really would be, if we were going to revisit this, when would be a good time to revisit it for purposes of people planning yet another year out?
So we have a trip this October that was planned a year and a half ago. And we have a trip to California that was planned, started about in March of last year. So if we're looking at a spring break trip, that typically would happen in this upcoming spring, March or April.
January would be a good day to revisit this, or a good month?
That might be, just as things are changing, I don't want to box this in and say, well, we're going to look at this again a year. Let's look at it, I mean.
Look at it again in the next quarter.
Right.
As long as that's enough time to plan.
It takes 10 minutes of our time.
So January, you want me to just put it on the agenda for the January meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
And just to be clear, in terms of that domestic piece that is dropping off now, just to be clear, we are still talking about the 48 contiguous, right?
Correct.
Yes, by domestic travel.
I think the way you put it is you had to be able to walk, right?
The intent is the contiguous United States.
I just don't want anybody getting trapped somewhere.
Yeah, where there are multiple options to get back home, should there be an issue. I'm seeing nods.
Yep, that's what we spoke about.
All right. Good clarification, Brian. All right, any other discussion on this? Whereas we will move into administrative reports.
Okay. I'm going to pull it. Yeah, just toss. There's three that way. I just printed out the presentation, because I didn't know how well you could see it when I was up here. And so you could write on it. All right, so we'll start with the superintendent update. The first thing I wanted to just share with people is to do kind of a check-in with regard to our ESSER dollars, pointing out, just a reminder, that ESSER dollars come in different categories, ESSER, ESSER II, ESSER III, and they end in different years. So some are, some of the dollars are good through 2023, some are good through 2024. We've made the decision, conscious decision, to set aside some contingency dollars each year, because we don't know, obviously, what's going to happen. An example would be if something would change that would cause us to have to add transportation, that could be a really significant cost, and it's something that we'd be able to cover under ESSER dollars, and so we've set that money aside. So we do have that set aside for each of the next two and a half years. The input that we got over the summer, or spring, summer, from staff and from families was really focus on mental health and learning supports with our ESSER dollars. That was loud and clear, and I think we've talked about that a couple times at work sessions and Board meetings. And so what I wanted to share is, we're increasing our community partnerships either in number or within the groups or with. So we already work with Canvas Health, we're increasing our time with Canvas Health, or increasing Canvas' health, their time with us. We are going to join forces with Lutz and Associates, and we are increasing the amount of community and schools that we'll be working with, and that is detailed out below. So a lot of the dollars have been spent on FTEs, or full-time equivalents. So we've added so far, or at least posted so far for these. So half-time English learning teacher, half-time special education, we've increased 11th grade English, added a paraprofessional at the high school for specific credit recovery, added FTE at the elementary, added another, we're adding another social worker at the high school. And then here's where Canvas Health comes in, we're adding three additional contracted social workers through Canvas Health. These are called our TAP people, and I just drew a blank on what TAP stands for. Megan Miller may have to help me with that one. I'm going to put her on the spot.
Therapeutic Assistance Program?
Therapeutic Assistance Program, thank you. But that's what will happen, high school, middle school, and the elementary schools. We've heard conversation about Kel O'Leary at the high school through community and schools. We are adding a full-time person that does what Kel does at the high school, but adding that to the middle school for mental health and for academic support. And then in addition to that, we are going to pilot adding floating subs. So two at the high school, two for the middle school, three for the elementary school, and one for special education. The idea being that these people would be assigned every day to that building, but if things shifted, they could be moved throughout the district. Kind of a proactive way to help and make sure we have coverage in our classrooms throughout the district. So in addition to that, we've got some training pieces. So we've had crisis response training that's taken place. We're having mental health, that's where Lutz and Associates is coming in here during Workshop Week for our staff. And then we have our new teacher growth and development tool that we're training on, which really doesn't, you wouldn't think it would, but it links to all of this very nicely. And then we also are adding our PPE. So we've added additional signage for the year, so we're ready to go based on any different things that we need to put in place. So those are the signs that go up in the buildings, go on the windows and doors. We don't want to be caught behind the eight ball on that. We've added air purification systems to the middle school music rooms, so they are in line with what we have at the high schools. And then we just approved instrument bell covers for the instruments. So these are the things that go on the ends of all the instruments to help mitigate some of that spread of particles going. So that, all of that eats up a lot of the ESSER dollars. It goes quick when you're adding FTE. But I'm pleased with what the team has come up with, because I think it really, like I said, it really answers what people asked for, which was, put the money into mental health, put the money into FTE and learning. And with that, we're getting, oh yeah, go ahead.
Could you give us a ballpark number on that? Just to remind us of the scale?
Sure can.
Thank you. I knew that three or five that was there for that thumb.
So roughly, we are at, our set aside for ESSER $3 is about $480,000 a year. So that's the contingency. The set aside for ESSER II is about $267,000 a year. And then what I have on the screen here is, between ESSER II and ESSER III, it's about a million five. That's what is making up on this. ESSER II is 522,000, or ESSER III is 522,000, ESSER II is 536,000. So, a lot.
I was mostly hoping for that million five number.
Million five.
Thank you for all the details.
I didn't mess that up, did I?
What were the numbers?
522,000 out of ESSER III?
So a million.
A million, 1.5 million, roughly.
Right. 500,000 plus?
536,000. 522 plus 536. And then what will happen is, because we can take dollars out to 2023, 2024, if we don't use the contingency dollars, that's stuff that we will then use as we get into All right, so just to then touch base on, we start new teacher workshop tomorrow, right? So we're there, we're getting ready. Just some things to highlight, we spent a day and a half as an all administrative team working through our strategic planning, through retreat, working through COVID response things, working through discipline policy, really working on how are we going to stay aligned this year as we move back into buildings. In addition to that, we had a morning where our social working staff and our police liaison officer and others had our admin team trained in our new, our threat assessment and suicide screening protocols that go into place. So we are, our team was working on that all last year. That's all been finalized, and so now we have a very systemic, laid-out method of handling not only threat assessments as they would come through, but also how are we going to handle any type of screening that needs to take place for students who are in need. We have our building leadership teams that have been in motion here in the last two weeks, really trying to figure out, again, this alignment piece with strategic planning, with COVID response, how are we doing things? The thing, in addition to leadership, things like our Avid training at the high school just took place. And then like I shared at our work session, our COVID planning is back into, once a week, we're meeting, making sure we've, we know what's going on locally and where we want to move or stay with regard to COVID items. So like I shared, up and coming, tomorrow, we start new teacher workshop, next week, we start regular workshop week already. And then I did, I did want to point out also, on the 30th, is, the 30th is International Overdose Awareness Day. And so I'll be down with, down at the Confluence in the new parking ramp. At 7 o'clock, they'll be lighting the bridge up in purple, and we'll be doing a ceremony down there. So the police department will be down there, Sheriff's Department, United Way of Hastings, the mayor will be down there, really to try and kick off the awareness of drugs and, and just the idea that we need to be more aware with our youth all the time of what's going on and how we can be supportive and how we can get in between things that happen, and one of those specifically being overdoses.
And the prevalence of fentanyl.
And the prevalence of fentanyl, yep.
That's one pill, one time.
And I believe all Board members should have received an invitation to be a part of that event, so.
All right, any questions on any of that? Okay. So the other part of my update is going to be the COVID-19 response update, and it's also going to be where we're at with a recommendation in terms of where I think the discussion should happen. And to start off with, just a reminder that we're, again, we're trying to maintain a balance between not only the health and safety of our students, staff, and community, but trying to keep the best learning opportunities. We hear over and over again, how do we keep the most kids in school? Period. And that, that's been a theme that has run through the last 18 months. And the other part is, is just a reminder that the proposal or the recommendation, and I want to point out, closely aligns with recommendations and requirements from CDC, the Department of Health, and the Department of Education. Things have changed since last year, we talked about this at the work, at the work session. Requirements that were in place are no longer in place. Things that were left at the state level or the federal level are now left at the Board level. And so that's what brings us here to this type of an update and proposal. For those, for those watching, and just a reminder to the Board, the data that we're using to make decisions is based off of the CDC, it's based off Dakota County. We also use the Jay Wolson site, and that's really to get us information about what our case counts are, either at the 100,000 level or at the 10,000 level, at seven-day intervals or 14-day intervals. And so here's some numbers.
And the Jay Wolson site provides it at the district level.
The Jay Wolson site provides it at the district level, so that's why we use that site. So just some, some numbers to look at. So just for our 5033 ZIP code, so it doesn't include Washington County, these are the numbers that Dakota County can give to me every Friday. And all I would point out there is, you can see from the 6th through the 20th, 20th is the last day that we got these, the weekly positivity count or rate has gone up, not something that we would not expect. The people that have been reported to have at least one dose has gone up a little bit as well.
Do we know the ages of the positive counts, or is it just spread out?
We'd have to look at the Dakota County site for that. I don't have the positive count. The hard part with this one is, this is all of the ZIP code. So it could be kids in our buildings, it could be kids who aren't in our buildings, even at the age, so I don't, I don't have that level of data for that part. Underneath that, you'll see the Dakota County positivity rate is 4.7. Five gets to be that significant number that they talk about, or more significant number, so we're right there. If you looked at the CDC website, it shows our positivity rates a little bit higher than that, so I don't, I don't quite know where the discrepancy is, but this came off of that site. And then the Dakota County website shows that the dosage of 12 and older is at 77%, which is interesting, because if you look over to the right, I asked Mary Ellen Fox and her team, because we can pull the information, it's a, it's a really long process, you have to do it file by file. So Mary Ellen and her team pulled the 9th grade and the 12th grade to give us at least an idea of where are we at in our building. And our 9th graders are at 49.1% vaccinated right now, and our 12th grade is at 52.4%. So that's a pretty good idea, we're hovering around 50% vaccination rate in our. So that's a pretty good idea, we're hovering around 50% vaccination rate in our, in our high school. And then if you move to the top right, you'll see just that spread that we're talking about. So if we looked at seven day cases per 100,000, at the county level, it's 132 right now. At the district level, it's 159. If you use the CDC's guide with regard to what's low substantial and high, they'd both be considered in the high range. If you use the Jay Wolson site and you went 14 days per 10,000, the county would be at a 26.4 right now, and that would be considered moderate on that scale. And the district would be at 31.8 on that scale. And that, we'll get to that a little bit, remember that's the adjusted scale, that only goes up to 50, it doesn't go up to 100. So with regard to what is, what's a proposal, as I was thinking about this and trying to give an update, really we have three parts that are happening here all the time. We've got what's happening with our class schedules and our operations? What, what are we proposing that happens there? We then have our mitigation strategies, and then in the end, we've got all the other stuff, the exceptions, we've got the what's going to happen with health or with, with athletics, what's going to happen in band, we've got all of those protocols that come into place. So our proposal really is in, is three parts. So first of all, the daily schedule. We're recommending, nothing new here, that all K-12, including the ALC, is in person, they attend school five days a week, regular school hours. Middle school goes back to a six period day, high school goes to a seven period day, students who are enrolled in our Hastings Online Academy, that's grade nine through 12 right now, they continue online. Pre-K sections will intend in person as they're scheduled, so that's all of our, our Tilden kids. And then before and after school programming, so that is our before and after school care, that will continue as scheduled. So that's the, here's what we operationally are planning to do, that's what we recommend. Here's the big one, masks, right? So we've heard a lot about masks, there's really three options. The first option is A, B and C, so A, the first option is simply all students, visitors, everyone wears masks regardless of their vaccination status. B really is individuals who are two years old through eighth grade, they are required, they must wear a mask. The reason that we're at two years old is because that's the CDC recommendation that came out of that.
Excuse me, we need order in this room in order for the board to do their work. Thank you.
So that would obviously mean, as you can read there, all staff and visitors at Tilden, the elementary schools, middle schools required to wear masks anytime students are present and on site, and then masks would strongly be recommended for nine through 12th grade. You'll see that multiple, many of the districts around us, this is where they've gone, this is what they're doing. As of this week, pretty much every district surrounding us, this is the level they're at with this.
Please continue, Dr. Carter. Excuse me. Please, no, this is a meeting in the public. The board is doing our work in the public. This is not a public meeting in which we participate with the public. Please allow us to do our work and have the conversations that we need to have.
So as we go through it then, the least of it, so the third option really is that masks are recommended for everyone, right? So C, recommended to wear masks, strongly recommended for unvaccinated students, staff and visitors. So those are really the three options as a board to, to discuss, to talk through, to decide on for the start of the school year. With regard to masks, so if you were to choose A or B, we obviously have to put in place exemptions, alternate mitigation strategies and temporary removal. I won't go through all of them, but it's the things that people typically have questions about. So for example, there are going to be students that have medical conditions, there are going to be students that have mental health conditions or disability, just like we did last year, where they're not going to be able to wear a mask. So we have to have that in place for other, other things like obviously when you're eating or drinking, or when we're communicating with students deaf or hard of hearing, participating in activities where covering is going to get wet, right? You're obviously not going to wear a face covering when you're in the swimming pool. There, in the temporary removal, that's where we get into the idea of an E, engaging in indoor physical activity where the level of exertion, so this is where we do have the flexibility that we didn't necessarily have the entire year last year when we have kids in FIED, when we have kids who are participating in activities different than just sitting still. So we will have exemptions, alternatives and, and temporary removal pieces in a plan if A and B on that previous page are, are chosen. Our recommendation really is this, is that regardless of the model number used, so that, that means regardless of whether you're using the seven day per 100,000, you're using the 14 day per 10,000, really it breaks down like this. If we're in that minimal to low range, we think it's prudent to just be recommended. If we move into that moderate or substantial range, that's where we should begin requiring masks, age two through grade eight, and strongly recommend for everybody else. And then not until we get to the high would we require masks for everybody throughout the system. So then this slide really tries to tie all of that together. So on the top left, you can see the CDC would recommend making changes. Their low is 0 to 9.9, moderate 10 to 49.9, substantial 50 to 99.9, they're on that 100 point scale. Currently, the county's at 132, which is why you're seeing it get reported that we're in the high range. So that's where that lives. If you were following, send back to what I just shared, you would have everybody required to wear masks right now, if you were following the guidelines and masking, everybody would be in masks. If we look at adjusting that down to the more local level, so off, again, using that Jay Wolson site where we can go 14 days over 10,000, you'll see that we break it down more granularly to a, a 0 to 50 scale. If we did that, it would get us to 26.4, puts us in a moderate. The 14 for 10 at the Hastings level puts us at 31.8, which is substantial. So we wouldn't be quite there to having masks required for everyone if we use that adjusted scale. So again, our recommendation that I have circled in blue there is, at this point in time, based on what those numbers are, that we would require indoor masking for students age two through eight and recommend for everyone 12 and older. We'd recommend further that it would begin August 30th and it would stay in effect until October 1st. The reason for this is, one, we have open houses coming up, two, schools start, the first day of school is the 8th, that would give us from the 8th through really the last week of September to kind of figure out, do we need to make any moves or not? It would give us a three week period of time. So those, after October 1st, any level that we were at would maintain, we'd maintain that level for two weeks. So we're not jumping around, so there is some consistency. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't, if things got really bad really quickly, we wouldn't move up a level in a shorter interval, but if we moved, for example, if we go into the moderate substantial, we wouldn't go less than that for two weeks, we'd stay in that for two weeks. If the numbers went down, we'd go back down.
So just a clarification, based on what is circled, we have that at this level indoor masking required for students age two through grade eight, but recommended is now based on age rather than grade. It says strongly recommended for everyone 12 and older, but I assume you mean for everyone ninth grade and older.
It would be ninth grade, we would go ninth grade and above, yep. The only caveat to this would be in any given building, so any of our buildings, if for some reason in that building it went 5% positivity rate in that building, regardless of that, then we would require masks in that building until such time that that positivity rate in that building went down for, to 3% for five consecutive days.
So in that building, the staff and students?
Staff and students, yep.
Thank you for that. Did you say that you don't know that the numbers of the ages?
I have a hard time hearing you with all the talking.
So the numbers that we're at, you don't know the range of ages or like, that wasn't a way online to figure that out?
So the rest of the, the rest that I have here are those mitigations, so the third part, the mitigation strategies, the protocols. So our plan has social distancing in place in terms of what's practical. So for example, lunchrooms. We're working with the building principals at each different level with regard to how do we, for example, at the elementary schools, when the masks are going to be off, how do we continue to separate students as far away from them, from one another as they can be while they're eating? At the middle school and the high school, it's how do we cohort students so that we don't have an entire class, but yet smaller sections eating together? Sanitizing, we talked about that, we'll continue that. Contact tracing, we're going to follow the Department of Health guidelines for contact tracing, which leads into then close contact. Really, that close contact is still defined as six feet for 15 minutes in that 24 hour period. The caveat to that is the, if two students are both masked and one student is positive, if the other student is also masked, they're not considered a close contact. Right? So that's how that system works.
Please be respectful.
The other piece is those who are vaccinated. So working through those definitions from how, how someone is considered a close contact or not. With regard to quarantines and positive cases, so we've got protocols set in place for when positive cases need to quarantine, when members of the same household have to quarantine, who's considered a close contact, who is not considered a close contact, and the fact that we have to report positive cases to the Department of Health. We have testing information in there, vaccination information in there, our health offices, there's a lot in there about health offices because students will still be sent home if they have a fever over 100, or if they have any of the, any of the signs or symptoms of illness.
And that has always been the case.
Correct.
Regardless of COVID, for clarification.
And that's why we're pointing it out here, I'm glad you brought that up, just because that's, that's the way our nurses function normally. The one thing that will happen is if a student, if that, if a student's in that position, they will be masked until they're able to be picked up. We have information there on absences. Transportation, masks are required for all students under federal regulations right now, so regardless of what status we are with masks in a building, anyone riding, any one of our buses or vans or school transportation is required to have a mask. We talked about meals in the cafeteria a little bit.
And just to clarify, the requirement on school transportation and buses is a federal requirement?
Field trips, we're still considering field trips to be happening throughout the year. Again, face covering is required, students would be required and staff to follow masking that was in place as if they were in school. Right now, visitors would be only visitors that are essential personnel, so a volunteer to a class, operation, academic support, no visitors for lunch at this point or anything like that. And that visitors, if we were in any type of a masking for that level, visitors would be expected to follow that same level of masking. And then the last piece is athletics, and right now athletics is still governed by the Minnesota State High School League, there hasn't been any additional guidance that's been given with regard to masks with that, and so athletics would follow into that exemption piece right now that we talked about a couple slides ago, depending upon what level of masking or unmasking we were in with regard to COVID.
Thank you.
So with that, that's, that's the information I have for you for the, for the update and what we're recommending at this point.
So then with that, that leads us to the board discussion on this and where the board is, is sitting and feeling and the direction.
I'll start the discussion by noting that a number of school districts in our area have already started and, or not started, but have committed to a masking policy of some varying degree. 917, where we send students to, is a fully masked operation following the state guidelines for the universities and tech schools.
Can you give us an update on what, or which districts surrounding us?
So as of this afternoon, South Washington County is age two through grade eight, Stillwater is pre-K through eight, Prior Lake, pre-K through eight, Lakeville is recommended until they hit 30, so they are using the same scale we talked about, but when that 14 day per 10,000 hits 30, it just hasn't hit that yet. They will be in that pre-K through eight. District 196 has their meeting tomorrow. Shakopee is age three through sixth grade, Farmington is age three through eighth grade, South St. Paul is K-12, West St. Paul, K-12, Amber Grove Heights, K-12, Redwing, pass theirs on Monday, they're K-12, Northfield is K-12, St. Anne Elizabeth's, or St., St. Elizabeth and Seton is fully masked. So those are the ones around us that I know of right now, that have already made the decision.
Thank you.
The question, so the reason-
Excuse me. Please allow us to have our discussion.
So the question you asked was what districts have the masking in place? Those are the districts that have the masking in place. Randolph is recommended. Cannon Falls is recommended at this time.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Superintendent McDowell before we have a deeper discussion or as part of our discussion?
In the information you, a few related, you have not heard anywhere where any local district has plateaued or reduced their numbers have gone down, they are exceedingly going up, correct?
The only, yes, the only numbers that I have are the ones from the county and from the CDC.
I appreciate all the numbers, I have a hard time grasping all the numbers because if it's a lot of elderly. Unless we all live with our elders, I'm having a hard time finding, having a hard time with all of it, obviously, but like directly, people living together in our district, I know it's hard to find out, but the numbers of the students that we have that are positive, that would be coming into the schools or the teachers or the parents of the children, that's why I have a hard time without not knowing the ages, you know?
Where are the numbers coming from?
If you know the 20 something percent of it, it's... But we don't have that data, so that's really hard to make a decision.
And unless kids are in our buildings and go positive in our buildings and- And unless kids are in our buildings and go positive in our buildings and it's reported to us?
We didn't get all that information throughout the summer. We did throughout the school year last year.
If they, if it had, if they were positive, yes.
We got that information.
So, was that, were you at a good stopping point there? Or you just, I know, it's so hard to just like, yeah. Okay. So, I have kind of a high level, I have two, what I think are higher-level questions, they're not super specific. On the, on the proposal of changes, the, just the no-scale, minimal, low, moderate, substantial, high scale, right now, moderate and substantial, the recommendation is those are blocked together. I am not comfortable with that. I am more comfortable with substantial and high being blocked together and that we move, should we be in a place, whether we use, well, if we use Wolfson, I think we can still use Wolfson against the current CDC scale. If we're in substantial or high, I am more comfortable with that being masked. Required for everybody.
Are you able to expand on that, Lisa, about how you, so, how that makes you more comfortable?
It makes me more comfortable because I feel like it, it's close, more closely aligned to CDC guidance. CDC has recommended, and MDH and MDE have supported their recommendation, that K-12 education be masked. And that they, my, in my reading of the guidance, or the guidance or the recommendation, and where it falls in the decision tree, is they are making that recommendation to us, the school board. And I would personally support that recommendation. I can appreciate that that is not taken into account, and that's not taken into account local conditions possibly. Their other recommendation, external to K-12, is if you are in a place, in a, in a region that's substantial or high, per their scale, which is the 100-point scale, seven per 100,000. Substantial or high, indoor masking is recommended. So, if I am to move off of my personal comfort of saying, "We have been asked to mask K-12", and say, "All right, I'm going to try and open my mind up to this a little bit more", I would want to see substantial and high masked. And then, moderate, because we can't, students up to 12 years old, which is a lot of mixing in the middle school, brings us to grade 8, they would be masked, we would mask at moderate. And it's those two pieces of information. Thanks for asking for clarification, Stephanie.
I appreciate that, Lisa.
So, that's my, that's an overarching one, and then, specific to the scale, the CDC versus adjusted. And I've expressed this in our work session. I am not comfortable with, with moving to the adjusted scale because in my mind, the adjusted scale is the scale that was used last year and was developed by MDE and MDH, where they said, "All right, this is where you can be in person, this is where you can be hybrid, this is where you can be, should be all distance." And, and it was broken down by level. And that's what we knew then. Current CDC scale is the seven per 100,000, and we can get that specific to the Hastings district. We don't have to adjust it to anything, we can get that to the Hastings district. And, and I feel like we should use the scale that's recommended with what we know today, with what's being recommended today. And it puts us in high, puts us in high as a county, and it puts us in high under current measures for the district. So, those are my two thoughts, Corey.
I'm just looking for clarification on the seven, on the CDC recommendations at the district level. I thought we could, I thought the only place that we could get at the district level was off of the Jay Wolfson site.
No, we can adjust the Jay Wolfson numbers to be 14 per 10,000, but the Jay Wolfson numbers are seven per 100,000.
Yeah, Jay Wolfson gives us district numbers in that seven per 100,000.
Yep, which is the one-
You can adjust any seven per 100,000 number to 14 and 17, but-
Okay, so you're saying use that, I was, I thought you were saying that the CDC had somehow provided-
No, 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 I'm sorry if I was unclear.
Nope, that's, that's why I'm asking.
It's still using those, those district-specific numbers, but not adjusting them to a scale that was used in a previous year.
Correct.
700,000 maybe scares me because we don't have that many residents, so, and I'm not a very good mathematician. So, can you explain what between-
It's just a ratio, so you could, we could adjust it to a different, we could adjust it to a different ratio. I mean, if you, you just-
If it's for, if it's, according to the site that I was just on, they're, they're giving it seven days per 100,000. So, to go to 14 days per 10,000, you simply divide it by five. So, their current number is 159, is our current district level at seven per 100,000. So, if you divide that by five, you come up with the number, the current district 14-day-per-10,000, that 31.8. That's-
Right, but then, that's how you translate it into a different number. So, that's just about, about putting it in a scale where the bottom number looks like something that represents your community. But, when you compare the currently advised CDC scale to the adjusted scale, what was being called adjusted on this slide, what that really is, is the MDE scale from last year. Is that correct? Those numbers are the MDE scale from last year. So, if you are going to really adjust the CDC scale to 14 per 10,000, you would divide those breakpoints by five. So, the breakpoint between low and moderate, instead of being 10, would be two. And instead of between moderate and substantial being 50, it would be 10. So, I mean, we can put it in whatever scale, whatever, like, size ratio we want to put it in. But it's still, I still would support using the current CDC scale, translated to whatever size you want to translate it to.
And I think, I understand that the CDC scale of per 100,000 seems like, okay, well, we don't have 100,000 people here, but what it really is, is taking how many people we have in our community, what those cases are, and multiplying that by a constant to get to that 100,000 scale. It's, it's working on a ratio.
Just a math breakdown.
So, I have, I have two kids. My youngest did not, distance learning was not great, I think, is, that's how we'll put it nicely. It was really tough, second grader. And I know we were not alone in that. I know distance learning and hybrid learning was tough on many, many children. I know it was tough on staff. I know it was tough on families, who were trying to figure out how we're going back and forth between we're in person, we're not in person, we're in person half-time, now we're in person full-time, now we're in person no-time. And that was stressful, it was hard. And I want to keep our kids in school. That's my priority. I want to figure out, how do we keep our kids in school?
If we use current guidance about close contact, and both, and all students are masked, we're going to cut our close contacts down to unvaccinated siblings. I mean, that's under the current guidance.
I guess I, I'm thinking and looking at numbers, you know, if you, if you look back and you say, in May, the numbers were here. In June, the numbers were going down. July, we're looking great, we become unmasked, and then, the numbers start creeping up and people are getting sick and situations are creating difficulty amongst friends and neighbors and, but I think the big picture here is the health and safety and the education of our students. That's what this board was brought in, school boards are for. We, we need to look at the things that are vital to education, moving forward, and do the best we can with our students. You're looking at a situation where I just asked our superintendent, "Is there any instance that you are aware of that school districts locally or even in the state are in, they've plateaued and the numbers are going down?" That is not the case, to the best of my knowledge, that I've been able to look for. I'm thinking that whatever we agree to tonight is probably drastically going to have to change again in two weeks or a month, or maybe even sooner. But I think we have to act, and I would agree with what Lisa has said about looking at the CDC guidelines and looking at the adjusted and remembering, we're just looking at things and saying, "Okay, numbers vary, but if you just look at a math problem and deal with it in those contexts", you know, we're positioning ourselves at our, our schools and our employees and our students, and putting ourselves in a very delicate situation. Right now, I would support a mask for everybody pre-K through 12, because I think we're going to get there soon. And-
That data's horrible.
In the discussion that we've had so far, I think these are, you know, the mitigation, the, the way masking is, you know, handled, the strategies in trying to make the school day work and have school five days a week. We have to try this, and we have to say, A, this is going to save some situations, maybe even lives, but we have to proceed and do something that will keep our kids, our grandkids, and others healthy and safe. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dave, and Lisa, for starting this conversation. We know going into this that it is a very difficult decision, that we are put into a position to make this decision for the community as a whole. There are going to be angry people regardless of what we decide. We acknowledge that, right? I want to thank the community that took the time to reach out to us. Most of the emails I received provided a lot of insight into the concerns about COVID-19 and, and this decision that we have to make. So much so that I found myself changing my opinion almost daily. Thank you for sending that information. I read every email, I looked at every link, and I took it all into consideration. Thank you. I appreciate the links for the academic articles and, you know, it, it, there's a lot that goes into this, the medical and mental health discussions that bring us to our, to this particular topic, and it is not easy. I don't understand how a pandemic has become so controversial and a polarized issue, but I'm at least reminded that as Americans, we have the freedom to advocate for ourselves, our beliefs, and our loved ones. We bring in all the voices of the community, right? As, as a board, that is our charge. But at the end of the day, I'm here to make sure that the decisions are in favor of our kids and our educators so that they can receive an equitable education. And in when I say equitable, I'm talking about our healthy kids and our unhealthy kids. I'm talking about our children that have an IEP, that have, that are on the 504 plan. I'm talking about everybody. I'm thinking about our, our, our English learners. How difficult is it to learn English with a mask on? It is incredibly difficult, I imagine. In the emails and discussions that I've heard, and even tonight too, it was brought up, you know, constitutional rights. I want to clear the air that constitutional rights are conditional. And, and it should not be misinterpreted that the Constitution is, you know, there's, there's a decision that has to be made. You know, are we in favor of public good? Or, or this, this interpretation of personal liberty? I don't know. What I do know is that we don't have the right to spread illness. We have an obligation as a board to protect the public health, right? Again, I continue to go back and forth up until this moment, but I, I appreciate everybody's input, community and board members. I think something needs to be done. I absolutely do. And I think it needs to pertain to our community as a whole. Not, you know, if CDC is looking at the entire nation, right? What does Hastings need? What? I think there's a threshold that we need to consider, and I think this adjusted scale provides that threshold so that we can make a decision by the site or by the Hastings-specific numbers to mask or unmask, to take those protected mitigating tools. I- This is tough. This is right up there when we were dealing with the budget issue.
I think it was worse.
It is, this is worse. I wish there was this much passion about the budget issue, I really do. I think that is incredibly important. As a taxpayer, I want to know what's going on. Thank you for all of your input, and I, I do want to see an adjusted scale and that we can make those modifications by site and making sure that our children are in person and receiving the equitable education that they deserve. That's all I have to say on that right now.
Can I ask you a question, Stephanie, or do you want to?
Yeah, no, absolutely, Lisa.
So, I, I just want to understand a little bit more about why you value the adjusted scale?
The way that I'm interpreting it, Lisa, is that it's more curtailed to Hastings. It allows, and, you know, I think either scale allows a little bit of flexibility, but right now, I think it's a better fit- but right now I think it's a better fit for our community. So that's a very rudimentary answer, but...
So, I know that, I know that many people believe that this is an easy decision for many board members and that we already had decisions made a long time ago. And I can assure you that is not the case. And this is a very difficult decision. I think... And when we've talked about scales at the work session and, and this session, this was one that I had struggled with, which scale and why. And, you know, I am a researcher. I am a statistician. I look at numbers. And something Lisa said tonight, which was that the scale up to the 50 is using last year's data. And I think that's something we've seen throughout this whole pandemic with flexibility, with things changing. And I think that's something that many people don't understand about science and how science works. And science is looking at the information that we have and making the best decision that we can with that information. And as new information comes, that information can be taken and incorporated and new information, new guidance can come from that as we gain more information. And so from that standpoint, I would support using the newest scale developed by the CDC as we've had a year and a half going through this and learning new things and seeing new scales and adjusting information. But using that scale not at the county level, looking at our local data. Because the county is big and, I mean, we have communities in the county that, you know, their numbers explode and it drives our county numbers up when we look at that. And I know that there are people in the community who work outside the community and that that is a risk. But overall, I think using local data is important to me. And what we're seeing in our community is important.
Brian, you have been quiet.
You know, I always take it in for a while. Much like Stephanie, I have spent a lot of time with this, talking to a lot of people. Again, I'm with her, Stephanie. I want to thank everybody in the community for the amount of information they've sent. I've read all of it, gone through the different lengths, looked at the different data. And I do tend to move the way Stephanie does. One of the things that Becky brought up tonight that's eating at me, I'll be honest about it, is I really want to know what our community's numbers represent. And I don't know if we can get to it or not, but what's bothering me is, I'm looking at, was it 38 last week? 38 what? 38 who? Where do we, you know, who are those people? Last year, as we were going through this, what were the numbers of students within, by building that tested positive? What did that come out to as a representative percentage of the building? Because I agree that if you've got a representative of students and you've got a scale you can set up, whatever the scale wants to be. You've got a representative number of students, you've got a percentage. We can say what those percentages are before we change what the protocols are. But by building, I think it's important to know what that was. That's when we actually knew real numbers, real students. I see Becky's point in the sense that the thing that's eating at me is, we don't know, are these the kids? Are these seniors? Who is it? And is the number, you know, is that 38 in aggregate average over a certain period of time? Or is that the actual number from last week? I mean, obviously I see the trend moving up. I, I see that. But I also know how many people are in this town. I know one of the things I did not like about last year was that we were being rolled in with Apple Valley and Eagan and Burnsville. And their living situations are different, their concrete settings are different, their demographics are different. So I didn't like that. So I am 100% on board with using numbers that represent us. But that brings me to, what are the numbers that represent us? That's the difficult part about this is I see Becky's point in terms of who are they? And where, where are we really? Where do we sit as a community right now? I do agree that it is, you know, when you get into a situation where you don't know, you need to err on the side of caution. I get that. But at the same time, I continue to be bothered by the fact that we don't know what that number actually represents. And the, at the national level, there's been so much movement back and forth and here and there that it's hard to get a hard line in that sand that doesn't move on you. The ball, you know, the ball keeps moving. That's where my, my deepest thought comes from. And I see where Becky is going with the who are they? And I understand what Stephanie's saying with the movement and changing that we've had to, have to go through over this last couple of weeks. I've changed my mind, I don't know, 14 days, 13 times, about what we should be doing. Trying to best represent the people that put me in this chair. Trying to best represent the people that didn't. And so it gets a little convoluted when I don't feel like I have every single piece of information in front of me that I'd like to have.
I don't know if we'll ever get that.
I know.
I've been working in the pandemic as an ICU nurse and cath lab nurse for the last year and a half. And I've watched the changes that I've physically have seen. We're not going to have all the information. I've seen so many different drugs come through. I've seen so many different masks, face shields. All, I mean, every day, every day it's changing. So I don't think we'll ever have all the data that we want. And that's what's hard. Because when we ran for school board a couple of years ago, did we ever think that this would be happening? Sitting in a room full of valued community members, deciding whether or not it's okay or not okay for our kids and their kids to be wearing masks in school? I don't have the right answer. I don't think any of us do. But I think we have the community at large's best interest. Otherwise, I don't think we'd be sitting here every other Wednesday doing what we do.
And I think that regardless of the decision we make tonight, just like last year, we know that new information will come out and there will likely be new guidance. And we will need to remain flexible in everything.
I do have a question. Last year, I don't want that to happen again. In school, hybrid, a couple of days a week, which school was going back in? I had three kids in three different schools and I never knew which day, which, which kid was going into school. Based on the graphs, the numbers, what if we're at high with masks? Is that a possibility that's going to happen? That if we're at a high number, we're all wearing masks? Would we ever have that decision to go distance learning or back to hybrid?
The way that they've worded it so far is you hit a, at the elementary level, you hit three cases in a classroom and you're contacting the Department of Health and trying to decide what do you do with that classroom? No different than if it was chickenpox. That's how they've explained it. In terms of how you process through decision-making. At a building level, you hit that 5% threshold and that's where you have that conversation with the Department of Health. I don't know what the answer is to that. We just, I mean, you and Brian just had that conversation about not having all the information. I couldn't do anything but speculate what that's going to be. I have no idea.
I'd say yes.
Yeah.
So there's no automatics on any, beyond what we're doing now, the hybrid, not that, that's Department of Health, conversations down the road, that's not on the table.
So far, there's been no discussion?
Right, okay. So that brings us back to this piece that I just wanted to, I think it's a good question to ask Becky. Is that there's some, is there, is there something else? There's not right now, okay. So they're all in school, it's just a matter of how.
Right, everybody's in school. And last year, this decision got made by a different group of people sitting at a federal level, supported by a group of people sitting at a state level.
Right.
This year, it belongs to us, for now. And I do think that's an important piece to understand. As I look at this and I think about it is, we're talking about how do we enter school? And then what's the process whereby we're going to shift, right? We did that last year. We passed our resolution. We said, this is how we're going to get started. We're granting the administrative team the authority to shift because we don't meet frequently enough and we have to provide so many hours, so many days advance notice. So we're going to go in. This is how do we get started, knowing what we're doing now? And, and as Superintendent McDowell pointed out, we're starting tomorrow. We're not starting tomorrow with students, but we're starting tomorrow with new staff. And then we're going to start with open houses and then we're going to have all staff and then we're going to have kids. And whether this is the decision we thought we were going to make when we ran, we ran to make the decisions. I would, that's, that's the reality, right? People say, oh my God, you really like being on school board? And my response is, I like being at the table. I like being in these discussions. I liked hearing people's perspectives. And I accept that it's our decision to be made. And that's kind of how I look at it. So we've had a little conversation about scale. Excuse me. What, one of the other pieces I put out that we haven't had a follow-up discussion on and if people want to share, I'd be interested. Right now, the, the proposal that we've used to get the conversation started is blocking moderate and substantial for two-year-old to eighth-grade masking. And I considered, I, I put out that I'd be more interested in seeing moderate being a place for two-year-old to eighth-grade masking and substantial and high blocked together. Again, around CDC guidelines saying, if you are in a part of the country that isn't substantial or high, it is recommended that you are masked indoors. Does anybody have any? I've had no time to think about it responses that they want to share in a public setting that will be on tape forever?
I don't take, I don't take issue. I don't take issue with breaking it out that way, Lisa. I think that does make some sense. My only question would be, if you're going to apply some type of scale that the community can then utilize to know, okay, our number is this, here's what's going to happen next, what is that scale going to be?
Well, right, and that's the piece that we've been talking about. And quite honestly, I, I, I understand, I think I understand, well, you guys are talking, you guys are, Brian and Becky, about when, when we say the seven case, the seven-day case rate for 100,000 is, you know, it's a rolling seven-day average of people that live in these zip codes that have been identified as COVID-positive through a test, right? Averaged over 100,000 people. It's just a rolling seven-day average. That's all that is. What we don't know is how many of those people are 0 to 19? How many of those people are 20 to 30? That's the piece we don't know. And we may never be in a place where we can decide fast enough. Once we're in a building and we're getting kids that are going to the nurse in school and we find out they tested positive, then we can start to say, all right, the rate in this building is a number and it's about, it's kids about this age. Then that becomes that second trigger, right? Like if a community all of a sudden gets like, actually gets really highly vaccinated because Hastings is lagging the county, Hastings gets really highly vaccinated, but we still are popping high positivity rates in an elementary school because we can't vaccinate those kids yet. You know, then that becomes a second trigger beyond the number. And that's when you can start seeing what age it is. This is how do we get going? To me, this is how we get going.
Right, and I think the numbers question, I think, is a fantastic question. And I also think it's one of those that even if we had those numbers, those numbers are based on a certain set of circumstances that we're at right now, which is kids are outside playing at summer, kids are not dirty in a classroom, kids are not, you know, in this position and in that position. They're not eating lunch together. They're home for the summer. They may be having play dates, but they're also outside a lot. And that's a circumstance that's going to change. And we have no idea how the changing circumstances with school will change whatever those numbers say if we could have, have the answer to those numbers. There are so many unknowns right now and so many things that are changing and so many things that will change as soon as we go back in school that we don't have all the information and we won't have all the information because then the seasons will change and then the numbers can change differently. We just can't anticipate what any of that will be. Scott, I don't think we've heard from you.
Which is extremely strange. No, I, I, I really wanted to not only listen to the community and, and like Stephanie, thank you for all the emails. We, we read them all, the, the good, the bad, the nice, the not-so-nice. We read every single one of them. And I, and I appreciate and I value every one of them. As a school board member, we're put in a position to do what we think is best for our community, for our, for our families, for our staff, for our students. None of us thought we'd be in this position. Two years ago, none of us had heard of COVID-19. When we all got sent home in March, we all thought, oh, it's going to be a couple of weeks. Oh, it's going to be a month. So what we thought we knew is certainly different than, than what has come to pass. So we're left with the question of how do, how do we best serve our students? How do we best serve our staff? How do we best serve our families? And in my mind, and I've heard this said already, loud and clear, I want our kids in school. Loud and clear, I want our kids healthy. So how do we get there? Just like last year, last summer, and, and I'm, I'm working off memory here, but I did some reading on this last summer about the epidemics and pandemics in recorded history. And there's seven. And every single one of them, every case, everything got worse when the weather got cold. Why? Because people are moving inside. You're moving into an enclosed space. I too would, I, I'd love to have more detailed numbers about who this is impacting, who is testing positive, et cetera. There's kind of two mitigating factors to that. One, our students aren't just with other students. They're going home to their 20, 30, 40, 50-year-old parents.
Yeah, me too.
They're going, they're, they're going to spend time with their grandparents, with their aunts, their uncles, et cetera. So it's not just the child. The other mitigating factor that we have is, is we keep talking about at a district level. And I value that. I, I like to think that somehow we're a bit more separate, you know? And we are, geographically we are. But the reality of it is, is that we have exposure all over the Twin Cities metro, okay? We know 38% of our staff lives outside of Hastings. We know the majority of our parents and our families work outside of Hastings. Now, some of us are still working from our home office, but others are not. So as much as we like to say, well, you know, we're, we're, we're way off here to the east, we are interrelated. So again, I know Stephanie said this, that no matter what we choose, we're going to have people that are upset. We're going to have people that agree. We're going to have people that disagree. I do appreciate that we've been able to do so respectfully. That's how I try to operate, and I appreciate people treating me the same. So thank you for that. Right now, I think the best way that I can serve with my one vote, that I can best serve our students and our staff and our families, to keep them in school, to do my best to keep them in school, to do my best to keep them healthy, is to have some type of intervention with a mask. We, we don't like them. I don't like them. But I, I've talked to my, my, my two older sons are, one is in college and one is out in the working world. So I talk to my youngest son and his buddies, you know, whether that be, you know, in activity or scouts or wherever. And resoundingly, they say we want to be in school. Okay, how can I best make that happen? How can I make that stick? How can I make it not like last year where we were bouncing around between we're in, we're in hybrid, oh, we just had an outbreak, we had, you know, with contact tracing, we've got 200-plus out at a very, you know, how long did we stay in session at the high school last spring?
Five days.
Five days, five and a half, six, something, I mean, something, five, thank you, Jesse, five days. It, it's horrific. That's what I heard. That's what I heard from the students. That's what I heard from the parents via email, via tearful phone calls from stressed-out parents. From stressed-out staff. That's what I want to avoid. So that is the direction that I am looking to go down. We can talk about scale. We can talk about predictability as, as much as we can control. I have some thoughts around the, the age bracketing that we can get into if we wind up going down this path. But I really appreciate the conversation from the six of us. I appreciate all of the information from the community, for those who emailed, for those who called, for those who caught me out in the community, at the grocery stores, one of my favorite places, so. Thanks.
So, Becky? I'd like to just come back to your thinking, because I know you had concerns about numbers and were feeling you weren't sure, I guess, which direction you were wanting to go in, and I feel like every other board member here has mentioned coming up with the scale in some way, and we can discuss, discuss the scale. But I would like to hear your thoughts.
On the scale?
Yeah, how you feel about using the scale.
I'd like to go by the district numbers, for sure. It's just so hard. I don't know. It's really hard. I don't know. So it says, you know, recommended for everybody 12 and older, but then we're saying required for two to eight, eighth grade, second to eight, you know, to ages two to eight, grade eight, so that's kind of, kind of dicting.
Right, and I clarified that. It's a typo. So it would be recommended for ninth grade and over.
Recommended ninth grade and over.
Yep. And the reason why that's eighth grade rather than 12 is because of how our middle school is combined and goes fifth through eighth grade. That logistically, it would be almost impossible to figure out who should and should not be wearing. Yep.
I've always said I want the kids in school five days a week, so. How do we do that?
No.
Well, that's good anyways. If you're going to require masks, are you going to require a N95 mask for everyone?
If you have a follow-up question, you are welcome to write to the board after. All right, so we need a starting point, right? We need to make a decision, otherwise we're not going to get anywhere. So what is our baseline that we're looking at? I'm hearing two different scales. And we're looking at two different cutoffs in that scale for grouping of what that would be. Yep. So the two scales would be looking at the 14-day average using the MDE and MDH scale from last year. We're looking at the seven-day average with the CDC's current guidelines. So that would be one decision. And the second decision would be grouping moderate with substantial or grouping substantial with high.
I mean, I'll put, I'll put something forward to discuss it, but.
Yeah, these aren't decisions we thought we would be making. We are not public health officials. We're community members. We each have our own specialty.
Yep, so for the purpose of I would propose, and this, this is just going to summarize kind of where I ended up, you know, through the course of the discussion, is that we use Hastings District data from Wilson, which is seven-day rolling average per 100,000, just a ratio. We, we go against the CDC's current scale, so we don't have to adjust the Wilson numbers. We use the CDC's current scale, and we block substantial with high. I think the other guidance around levels remaining in place for a minimum of two weeks, although we could go up to a higher number if we need to be, I support that bullet. And I think a 5% positivity rate in a building requiring masking in that building, if the community is, is lower, is, is also valuable. And I will acknowledge that that recommendation puts us in masking two-year-olds to 12th grade, 12th grade, excuse me. I will acknowledge that recommendation has that consequence.
Are you making that as a motion?
No.
That's our starting point for the discussion.
Starting point for the discussion. It is what I would feel most comfortable supporting.
Lisa, would that moderate stay at 20 to 39.9?
No, I would be using the CDC scale up here. Yep, which is relative, which is the data as it comes straight off of Wilson. I see the adjusted as, as old, old scaling. So it would be this description, the description here that's on the right.
Against this top edge.
But instead of moderate, substantial being blocked, substantial and high would be blocked. And the numbers, the numbers that come off of Wilson would align to the CDC, these really tiny numbers that I can't read. I can read them if I, it's the 100-point scale. I can read them if I take my glasses on.
Okay, so let's take, let's take that as a starting point.
I would support that.
Can I ask why you want to put them together?
So the guidance from CDC, if you, if you put aside the K-12 guidance, which is everybody masked, is if you are in a part of the country in a region with substantial or high transmission rates in an inside setting or a crowded outdoor setting, the recommendation is masking. So if I were to say, all right, I'm going to set aside that K-12, and I'm going to stay open to scale opportunities, then the next recommendation from CDC is substantial and high are blocked. And that's, those are action levels. That's where it comes from for me.
So Stephanie, you had mentioned originally using the adjusted scale. So how do you feel about the scales one way or the other, as we've had more discussion?
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Lisa and, and Dave. I personally don't feel comfortable with using the CDC model. I would, I would prefer to use the adjusted model, but I also want to caveat that with knowing this is our baseline, and we know that there's going to be, we have to be flexible throughout the year. I would propose we just see where we stand with this for at least a month.
So this is what's hard for me to go to adjusted. Adjusted was a scale that Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education made up last year, last summer, to try and decide when do you break elementary and upper grades into in-person hybrid or distance learning. It was built for that purpose. And they had abandoned it, not abandoned it, they had moved off of strict adherence by the end of the year because we were starting to vaccinate and we were and the numbers were honestly going through the rough. Everybody was too hot. So there was starting to say, okay, yep, you're right, you're right, okay, your community's above 50. But you can come back in person if you do these other things. So it was a scale that was built. It's not community-specific. It's the state of Minnesota making the best decision that they could have made over a year ago. And I just really struggle with, with that. So this, I think, is the elephant in the room. And I'll just say it. If we go on the adjusted scale, as of today, high school doesn't mask. Right? That's what this says. And that might be appealing. There is appeal to that. But I, I can't scientifically support it. I cannot, in the process of my brain, support it. I didn't look at this and say, boy, I hope there's a way I can figure this out, that we get everybody masked. I looked at this and said, this is current guidance. I will try really hard to, to consider something other than K-12 guidance. And that's how I get there. I just can't make that leap back to that adjusted table. There's nothing, in my estimation, that is community-specific about that. It's, it's a really big leap for me.
Thank you, Lisa.
I guess one of the things I'm looking at too is that, you know, the, the county's talking about the vaccination rate is like 70-some percent, whatever. But when you look at Hastings specific, you are down in the 54 maybe percent. And that tells me that there's a lot of folks.
50, 56.1. And the high school vaccination levels are around 50.
Well, and another consideration, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. You know, when you, when crunching the numbers on who is in K through eight versus nine to 12, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McDowell, K through eight, the population is 49.2%. Those individuals are, well, correction, so the K through six, I, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean percent of our student population.
Of our student population. So K through six is 49.2% of our population. Those individuals are not eligible for the vaccination. However, those beyond that are eligible for it too. So I guess that, that provides a little bit of explanation as to why I feel more comfortable with the adjusted. Is that because the, the older grades are eligible for that vaccination, whereas the younger ones are not?
Well, and that's why I would agree with you. That's why I think you react at a moderate level, whatever, whatever you said, the numbers, you react at a moderate level to up through eighth-grade masking. And you, and you just continue to recommend it at high school, and you recommend across the board that people get vaccinated and maintain booster status if that becomes available. And that's why I see you have that, that first start. And you have that first start, it's not, we're not in that case right now, but you would have that where you could see the older grades, the high school, come out of mandatory masking, and you'd still be at a number where you'd maintain it at the other sites. It's not the case today.
Can I just clarify that? What you're suggesting is deciding on on a masking, no masking start, but not implementing any type of a scaling model until later.
No, I'm sorry if I was, if I was.
No, I think she's just stating that based on the scale she recommends or.
Yeah, just put forward.
It put forward. She's just stating that under that scale, this is where masking would start at each level.
Okay, so I'm saying, I would, I support this, the CDC scale with Wilson numbers for Hastings District.
At the seven-day 100,000.
Yep, and I acknowledge that that puts us in a high category.
Right.
Which is everybody masked. I believe, and I would put forward for discussion, that substantial and high should be everybody masking. And I would support having this in the resolution around that number. I can see why you want to just keep it as an addendum, but should there be a time where it comes down, community-wide, the Wilson numbers come down, and let's say they're 48 for a week, we're still on this scale, we're on this scale, we're on this scale, and then all of a sudden, we get to yellow finally. Then we can say, all right, we still would like you to mask at the high school, but it's not mandatory.
Right, that's the way, I mean, that's the way the leveling works.
That's the way the leveling works. I support the leveling, and I say the start, I'm saying, we're going to go by the data we have right now. The starting point is we're high. We've got this scale, and this is where we are. We just, that's where we are.
So I'm sorry, did you, you said you also supported the adjusted grouping, Stephanie? So putting substantial with high, did you say that? No, okay. How do you feel about that suggestion put forward?
I need to think about it more.
Okay. I'll just move on to each and every board member and make sure we hear from everyone.
I'm not sure I agree with the moderate or the substantial by going together. I kind of like if that, that each separated, and we kind of have a little guidance to move back and forth, especially between the buildings. If we have a higher rate in one building, then we know they'll be masked. So if the high schoolers are not wearing masks, then that building is 5% high or positive rate, then we know. I don't think that if it's saying that's recommended for the ninth and older, I don't think that maybe we should, just because of our numbers, say right now that it. Am I going by the district ones at 31.8 on adjusted?
If you go by CDC, it's 150. Well, it's 132.
Yeah.
132, but we were going by the district numbers.
Well, but if we look at the seven per 100,000.
The district, the district seven-day case rate per 100,000
Oh, you're trying to act like I'm five.
is 159. To get to the numbers that we would utilize on the adjusted scale, you would divide that by five, which comes out to the 31.8 number. If I understand Lisa's
Call it what you want.
Issue, what, what Lisa's point on this is that we're taking the CDC scale, okay, which is built on the it, it's, it's built on the per 100,000, and we're dividing the number by five. it, it's, it's built on the per one hundred thousand and we're dividing the number by five. And then you get down to the adjusted scale and you're not dividing the number by five. You're using the MBH number from last year, which
Right, you only divided the scale by two.
Right.
Okay.
So I don't wanna change the adjusted scale divided by five.
No, I don't wanna make a new adjusted scale. I, I don't wanna have to do math, man. And I like doing math.
I'm just pulling, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around this and I'm pulling the numbers off the Jay Wolfson site right now, starting in September of twenty twenty. Just for comparison's sake. In September of twenty twenty, we were at one oh eight. Then we started seeing our spike the beginning of November. We went up to three oh six. We peaked at eight sixty-eight right at Thanksgiving.
But at this time, we were at one oh eight?
Yep, comparatively to one fifty-nine. August nineteenth, we're at one fifty-nine. Last, last year, August twenty-seven, we were at one nineteen. According to the, you know, again, this is all things being the numbers.
We're higher this year.
Now, what we didn't have is we didn't have a readily available vaccine.
Yep.
Available. Whether people choose to utilize it or not is their choice.
Right. That's actually interesting, that even with a readily available vaccine, our numbers are higher.
Yep, it's a different variant.
Brian.
Is there a question?
So the
Response to the proposal.
Response to Lisa's proposal.
Just to give us a place to talk.
I still, I'm still not, I still don't understand why these are blocked together, either way. I don't know why they don't have their own standalone ones. I don't know.
Well, propose one.
I don't know what it would be though, because there's a line here, right? You put a line here between minus substantial, then what's gonna be the difference between the two? You know, does this just become part of the
Yeah, this is the, this is the proposal that, that we came into the meeting with. I'm suggesting that that, because they are currently blocked together. We have two things blocked together. And I'm suggesting that the real things that should be locked together are substantial and high.
Based on?
Based on CDC guidance about regional transmission rates.
So substantial and high becomes your all mask, moderate stays your case rate.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Till then.
Um, that's fine. I have no issue with that.
How about scale to use?
Um, on the staff, the CDC one bugs me only because it's nationally-based and I think they're looking at it from twenty thousand feet and we don't have that luxury. It's like anything else federal. They'll get it as a holistic thing. We don't have that luxury. We're up, we're here. They're there. So I'm not a huge fan of utilizing that because of, because of the way it's set up. I think they're, I think they're designed to look at things at a much higher level than what we're being asked to do. We need to look at it down here on the ground. That's why I'm so bugged by the number thing, but we need to look at it down here on the ground. I think the CDC has teased me up in the clouds for me. I want to do something, something just, something adjusted of some nature.
And just to clarify, so Lisa's proposal would put forward using the CDC scale of seven per one hundred thousand, but the CDC recommends using county-level data and Lisa's proposal would use local data. It would just be the seven-day average versus the fourteen. Which there are pros and cons to each one, but as we, yeah. And the seven-day shows more spikes, but it will also show more dips. It will, it will go both ways.
To counter that, to counter the dips, we have the once we make a change, we're staying there for two weeks. Just, just
Yes, we have an overlay.
Just, just for another data point, as I look back, the Wilson side only goes back a year, so I went back as far as I could, at no point if, if we were to say that we're going to group substantial and high together, looking at last year's numbers and extrapolating them to this year, last year we would have never gotten out of masking the entire year.
Instead, we got out of school.
Instead, we only had half our kids in school or we didn't go.
Just delay that.
But our numbers were, the numbers were out of that group also. Not also, till the scale gets kinda hard to read.
Yeah, they were.
July. It's hard to see where the break's at. I mean, I'm looking at the same thing you are, but
Yep, it's June third, June third, so
Oh, that's it, hover on that.
June third is the first, is the first time that we moved out.
I see, I see how you're looking at it.
Of anything else.
June third of this year?
Yeah, through the twenty-ninth of July. No, I was just trying to, I was looking at the same thing, but I was, but if you hover over it, then you see the date.
So that data point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Scott, so what is how do you feel about the proposal that Lisa sent? I'm trying to keep track of all of this here to kinda see what our consensus is, is building.
I think I would rather use the adjusted.
Okay.
I understand that the dividing by five is not exact. Okay, even the data scientist who created this says that it is a reasonable approximation.
Okay. And then how do you feel about the way to group that Lisa put forward?
I would like to, if, if there's to be any grouping, I would like to keep moderate and substantial grouped together and leave high as it's, as the trigger point, as it's laid out. If we're going to choose to group any of them together. That's my thought process, but I appreciate hearing other people's points of view.
And so, and Stephanie, have you had time to reflect on how you feel about the moderate, substantial, high grouping?
I, I would like to keep it as-is with the adjusted.
Okay. And then Becky?
I'd like to keep it as-is.
Keep it as-is. Okay, and how about scale? Also keep that as proposed with the adjusted scale?
The adjusted makes more sense to me. I get it from last year's data with the approximation. I like that. So that's the one I leave for, just the adjusted.
Okay, so Brian, you had mentioned the adjusted grouping and you were okay with Lisa's adjusted scale. Are you comfortable with using the grouping with moderate and substantial together versus substantial and high together?
Yeah, it's fine. I'm more caught up in the number, so.
Okay. And I know for myself, because I do think that's important for the community to hear, as I mentioned, I would be more comfortable using the newer scale that has been developed after a year and a half of additional data being collected and being put forward by the CDC as far as the groupings go. I am comfortable with keeping moderate and substantial together. So I think based on that, the majority of the members around this table would go with the grouping as-is with moderate and substantial grouped together, which would require the masks for K through eight. And then using the scale that's adjusted for the fourteen-day per ten thousand is what I am hearing from board members around this table.
I just had one, as it's, as it's proposed up here, it was H two. And I'd like to discuss that point a little bit. H two to me seems sort of
Pre-CA.
I, right.
But we're starting, and if you're looking, let's begin to tell them.
Right, right, pre-CA.
Pre-CA.
Is that two?
Could be.
CDC two. I agree, we have moved ourselves an awfully far away off the CDC guidance.
Yeah, we have moved.
We have moved very far away from CDC guidance. I don't love that. I'm very uncomfortable with it. But that's where you said, Superintendent McDowell, that's where the two comes from?
That's where that came from. Was only for that.
I think that given how Tilden is grouped with the senior center, I would like to be more cautious with that.
I just pictured two of you with a mask. I just, no.
I know.
I, I know, you're, you're, you're right. I know you're right. This says you're right. This is, seriously?
I think one of the things that, you know, I think we could, we're working towards this agreement and I think we're, we're very close in making an agreement that sticks for right now. But my fear is looking at the numbers and looking at as, as the percentages have gone up even just since what, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
If it ticks up the same chunk, where are we gonna be at in two weeks? We'll be back into that kicking right to the top again. So I think, I think we probably have an agreement here for right now. But my thinking is, we're looking at this and we need to give the superintendent direction to say, okay, here, we can live with this today, tonight. But fourteen days from now, as the percentages keep growing, we will be, we know that we will be in that high category.
So at this point, what the board is comfortable with actually falls in line with what the recommendation was. I don't think we've veered off from that.
Just, just to put it in perspective for you, Dave?
Yep.
We would jump into that, we would jump into that high category even a little bit before our November fifth spike from last year. We, we would jump into high. And November fifth is when we started seeing, because then
That's where the numbers.
It was before Thanksgiving, we had everybody out. And then we had a big spike and then we, we started pulling people back in and then in April again. If, if we had the April spike, again, we would be at that number. Where every, everybody would be, not out, everybody would be masked.
But I, I believe the most important thing is is we need to have our kids five days a week in for instruction. And however we can make that happen, that's the most important thing.
Is there any more discussion that board members want to have on this topic tonight?
I think we just need to acknowledge that we're we're taking a shot at this. And we're going to be agile and we're going to adjust as necessary as we move forward. And that includes if we need to adjust the scale based on something new. You know, if there's anything that we've learned over the last year and a half, it says we can't predict what's gonna happen.
Just a question. Just to clarify my question then. So if this is where you go with the resolution later on, with that October one, if, if we, if we go with this and we, we plan on starting using that scale, which would be the through eighth grade at this point with masks, do you wanna keep that in place for those three weeks or if it goes higher, we go higher?
If it goes higher, we go higher.
That's what I would just need to know, clarity, huh?
I'm not comfortable with this recommendation and I'm not convinced I'm gonna support it when the resolution comes up. Cause I, I think it's insufficient given the guidance that we've been given. But I, I have nothing more to say than what I've said about it. So just, I mean, I, I wanna articulate that that's my likely position. But I don't wanna make a decision today for school in three weeks. If we see these, this trend continue and I have no reason to believe it's not going to. So this is what, at the, at a minimum, this is gonna be our resolution. That point of increases could happen on a shorter interval. I think that's a component of the resolution.
That's all, I just wanted to clarify that. Yep.
Like Lisa, I am I am uncomfortable with the scale that's being used. But I will support the resolution. Recognizing that, as Scott mentioned, this last year has showed us how flexible we need to be and that the scale can be adjusted. I do wish that we were following the current guidance and the current the current recommendations.
As the numbers peak, that might be a neat point.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with letting, letting that make the decision for us. I think, I still think we have to make the the decision. And I'm disappointed that we're not.
When you get to the resolution page at the end, you'll walk through each one of these to decide what, make sure it's the way you want it. Make sense?
So pick the resolution.
Okay. So then we're
So?
We're moving on.
With that, we move on to athletic, athletic ticket sales procedure change.
Trent Hanson. There he is. Oh, it's brutal.
Trent, you'll have to pull that, you'll have to turn the clicker on. I didn't turn it on the side there. And then I'll pull the
Okay.
Take a break. Yeah, this will be, this isn't very long.
It's all good.
Trent Hanson.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to share just for a couple minutes. A very brief box office update that is specific to athletic ticket sale procedures. Just have a few short slides to talk you through the why, the, the what and how. We'll go, we'll go quick, if it moves. There we go. So the what is, we're gonna move forward with cashless admission, uh, ticket sales at all of our home games, all of our events um, at the spaces that district events are held. Why we're doing this, there we go. Uh, the most important bullet is really at the top, uh, speaking specifically to the financial safety, security and efficiency of the process, right? Both for the purchasing side, uh, the ticket buyer, as well as for the school district side. We learned a ton last year when we didn't have the opportunity to even use cash. You know, we were all cashless last year. And people got on board and I think appreciated it. The other element is we're in alignment with what, uh, almost our entire athletic conference is doing. Most of our partners, including our section uh, protocols and state high school, state tournaments are all going cashless. So the other piece to remind you of is that this is just an evolution of what we've already been doing for the last couple of years. And we've taken card readers at the door. This will be a third year that we've done that. This will be the second year that we've, um, offered a version of online ticket sales, although we'll have a different vendor partner this year. But I think it just continues to move us to just a better process. So how people will be able to get their tickets, they've got a few different options. Uh, you can buy online in advance, single game tickets or season passes. Season pass is a little bit misleading. Uh, you can attend any event all season long, any season with that single pass that someone were to purchase. But that's all electronic. Uh, we've had electronic season passes before. We just have not had electronic single game tickets. I won't view it tonight in lieu of time, but, um, you can check it out online. You can find that link and it's a very user-friendly. You can find that link, and, uh, it's a very user-friendly, uh, platform. People though don't have to buy online, they can always buy at the door. They're just going to be asked to use a card when they get there. Which again is awfully consistent with what most of experience at our neighborhood shops and, and restaurants are the things that are happening right now. So from a communication standpoint, we're working hard to make sure that everybody's in the loop. We recognize upfront, early, will be where the speed bumps are. So we're trying to be real direct with our fall sport parents in particular, messaging to our opponents, right? Letting them know what's happening. Um, if the weather holds, we've got doubleheader soccer tomorrow night, so it'll be the first run at this thing. Uh, but we're using all the social media avenues, website, et cetera, and working hard to make sure that people are in the know. That's that. I was shooting for three minutes for you, how'd I do?
Season pass is literally by this, you go to any event, any season, you just, you get to go for the year, basically.
Correct. Season pass, there's two different versions, one is for an adult only, the other one is for an adult plus two, um, school age children. But yes, any home athletic event, any venue, any season, just not including the playoffs. So fall, winter, spring, stadium, hockey arena, yep.
Has there been any coordination between athletics and arts? Is this something we're going to see with, with music and theater parents as well?
Yep. So we started to have the conversation, hasn't been decided there yet. Uh, but we kind of want to get, um, a run at this early and see how it goes. I'm optimistic it's going to go well, which is what we did with the card readers two years ago. We started with athletics first, and then branched off and included the arts. So I could anticipate it going that way.
Does going that way mean this year, or going this, that way means some year?
Uh, I'm a little bit out of my lane, since I don't oversee the arts in particular, but it, I, I could see it happening this year for arts, yeah. There's benefit and consistency, certainly, in what people are getting used to. Internally, it's the same process, right? When you think from a financial side, it's, it's smooth on our side.
That was much, that was quick.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions, or?
Just for, for our students that are in a position to be paying at the gate. You know, I understand they can order the tickets online, I understand, you know, but many of them don't have a, I shouldn't say that, it's 2021.
It's 2021.
They probably have more cards than I do.
They don't carry no vehicles.
Fair point, so a couple, a couple, just quick follows. The majority, and I'd have to double check the percentages with Mike. I, I know it's like at least two-thirds, if not three-fourths of our high school students in particular have a blue or gold card that gets them free admission to any game already anyway. We're not at 100%, so that doesn't cover everyone, but it covers most. And then, um, even by default, you could certainly purchase a ticket online and print it out, right? So if the student didn't have a device, they could come with it, at least on paper, it's a QR code, right? So there's a couple workarounds that people have to get used to, but yeah, that's a consideration, for sure.
What about at the beginning of the year? How, how did the blue and gold cards work at the beginning of the, like for our incoming freshmen? And also for our returning students?
Yep.
So I, I think for our returning students, they keep whatever status they had as of the previous year.
Yeah, and it's a little glitchy with last year, of course. Uh, but typically they get them in hand somewhere late August to early part of September. So we just work off literally an old school list, we'll print out a spreadsheet, have it at the door, the kid just checks off. So we notify them upfront to make sure they have their status, so they know if they have a blue or gold card that's active. And then they can just check it off that way until they have it in their hand. Admittedly, the one group that has the hardest time early is your incoming freshman, because they haven't had a chance to earn a blue or gold card yet, but it's just for that first part of the first year.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
No, but please finish.
Huh?
Please finish.
Just, my only question was, do they get, do they get that after the first semester?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Or they have the opportunity?
They have the opportunity to earn it, yep.
They have the opportunity to earn that.
Yep.
Thanks. Go ahead, Brian.
So Trent, I know this, this may not be, uh, probably was on your radar, but I'm considering that a kid, and I know it's a small percentage, I'm considering the kid that may or may not attain a blue or gold card, wants to go to sporting events, just simply can't afford it. Have you guys found, uh, come up with a system for that? Has there already been a system in place for the kids that one or ten that can't afford?
The short answer's no, just to be real candid. It's certainly a conversation worth having, uh, with a lot of different tentacles to a solution. But no.
Okay. I didn't think you did, but I just thought I'd put it out there, so it's something that maybe gets on the radar for...
There, you know, I know some school districts essentially let all of their in-district kids in free, as an example. It's one way you could, you know, it's an option, right? Something to consider. But, um, like I say, it just requires more discussion to consider all those pieces.
Just, you know, thought process, I mean, for example, if something's not affordable, somebody, they send a note to Mike or you, activity fees waived for that sport, you know, that kind of, that kind of idea. Maybe they can come to the door and say, hey, this is my situation, maybe they take the name down.
Yep.
I don't know. Thanks, Trent.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
All right. So we have been at this meeting for three and a half hours. So I think a five-minute recess would be good to, uh...
Sorry, Jen.
I got all the way to the table.
Okay, we can also wait until we reach action items. Brian, you had your question.
I don't care when, I just think we need to...
Come on, Jen.
Well, quick, because we've already talked about all of it. Okay.
Jen's back.
All right, you want me to pull this up?
Yes.
Yeah.
I make it bigger. So there was not a lot of activity for this bond construction fund for last month. The one kind of significant change is in the technology improvement project. So it's down towards the bottom there. Um, we have a pretty big summer project going on right now that will wrap up before school starts. And it included replacing all the access points at Kennedy, Pinecrest, McCullough, and the high school, as well as network switches at all four sites. Um, there was some cabling that was included with that, too. So this project is eligible for E-rate, um, which will provide assistance to help with the cost of maintaining the internet access. Um, and once the project is complete, we'll get a total amount that is eligible through E-rate, and then you'll see that negative number on there, um, increase. So it's about 400,000 that we're anticipating that we'll receive. That's all I have.
Peace. And I was just reminded of this during the Todd Field cleanup day, because that was this past Saturday, and we received a big rainfall before, some rainfall before that. And that corner of the parking lot is...
It's still that way. It's still that way.
And we can't get authority to reset the front screen? We can't get authorization to do it?
I mean, I mean, it was, it was deep as the curb.
I know.
I remember when I first came here, you guys were just having that conversation.
Still going on.
It's still a city tie-in.
They don't want the drainage.
They don't want the drainage.
They don't give us authority to put it in.
Yep.
So we had to pump it out.
So I need to go buy a sump pump?
Yep, go buy one.
Drop it in there?
Nice big one.
Oh, Jen.
They, they go out and station for it.
I think Cam has been pumping it out.
That was our solution, not a good solution, but...
They go down with a pump and pump it out when it's full.
Something for now.
Yeah.
Thanks for saving us money on this one. Got money back.
Thanks for jumping on that.
Thanks, Jen.
I saw it with my, and I was reminded by about eight others.
That said...
What's with this? If only we had a school board member who could do something.
Bring this up.
Comfort break? Is it a good time to go to the bathroom?
That's what I'm...
When you get old or anything, can I just run over?
Do we need to go home?
Okay, let's take a recess and five-minute recess.
Let's throw them more than a begging to go to the bathroom.
So, 9:44.
...
All right, we'll give you this. Went back to that company and doubled it. Boom. How do I say no? Well, you don't.
All right. Next up is policy committee meeting. So I actually talked through basically everything in this document. As we talked about each specific policy, I just pulled this one up and was reading through it. So you'll see the policies that came up for the second reading and the first reading. And then we also do have one policy that will be brought forward later that had minimal changes, and so is just being approved to have the time, the date stamp put on it. And our next policies will continue to review the 400 series, and our next meeting will be on September 2nd at 5:00 p.m. So other than that, all of the other policies have already been discussed throughout the meeting. Super quick. All right, so moving into action items. First up is the consent agenda. And I always just like to remind people at home that if you sign into Board Book, all of the things that we approve as part of the consent agenda are there, and you are welcome to look through them at your leisure. So, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, any discussion?
Just one point on our change orders. I was happy to...
Well, yes.
One went the other way, finally.
So often they go the other direction. This time it was a six-figure deduction, so...
Thank you, Jen.
That is nice.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll give you credit, anyway.
All right. So with that, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So I'm just making sure. All right, items for individual action. First is staff recognition parameters. Sorry, every once in a while, Board Book just...
Remember, this one was the one we talked at the work session, where we adjusted for... We have... The way the policy works now, every fall, the school board will take up what will be the recognition for staff. And so, as you can see in your Board Book and what I have up on the screen, the decision was to switch from... Or switch to five, 10, 20, 30, 40, 45 years. Dollar amounts being... The equivalent being able to be selected at the school start.
So do we have any discussion on this, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, here is the vote for the health and safety measures for 2021.
So what I did was printed off a hard copy of a... Sorry, of a... What the generic revolut... Generic revolut... Generic resolution would be. And you'll see there are highlighted areas in it. Put this up for folks, so you can see what we're looking at. That... I think most of them are things that you had talked through that you're going to need to make decisions on. So what we... The idea was, we would walk through this at those decision points. And whatever you agree on, that's what will be in the final resolution, is what then you would be voting on. So when Stephanie finally says, "This is the resolution as written," it's the resolution that you agree on here as we walk through this document. So Becky will be tracking and adjusting as we go along. So we'll just need to make sure. And I think I highlighted all of the spots that you talked about earlier. Okay. So, if you look at the document, the first one, I'll pull it up here, would be, "Do you want this to begin on the 30th of August?" Which would be the first day of workshop week next week, which would be in place for the open houses.
Welcome back, it's virtual.
Welcome back, it's virtual.
Yes.
Just nodding heads, and then I'll make sure.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
How many weeks is that good for?
Well, we're going to get to that.
Okay, sorry.
So the next thing on page two that you talked about was face coverings. So this is where your conversation went with that A, B, or C. And I think where you landed was B.
Yep, for the start of the school year, based on the numbers that we're at in the scale, the board had wanted to go with their wants to use, then it would be B, where individuals within district buildings that are two years old through eighth grade must wear a mask.
And you'll see that in B, I already had corrected that it was nine through 12. I don't know how I missed it on the slide, but this is the way it was supposed to be read on that. Is that...
Yes.
That's still what we're at, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so that would read B. Here's my question to that, if... And this will tie into the conversations later. If between now and the first day of school, or the 30th, or whatever, it goes up, we're using that scale that we're going to agree on, right? That if it increases in severity, we'll call it, we would increase. It would only hold it... Only hold for two weeks if it starts decreasing. It's got... Yes? Okay.
Missing nodding heads.
Yes.
It's as of this moment in time, that's the plan. Okay. All right, so then, if you look, just for clarity's sake here... Oops, sorry, people out there. This is what we were just talking about here. Then you'll see exemptions, that's what was in the slide deck. On the rest of page two, removal of masks is page three, face shields, page three. All right, then we hit on page four, level movement. So this is what you talked about. And so if I go through this, on page four, 5A, I heard designated 14-day at the district level per $10,000.
Yes.
Yes? Not that everybody was happy with that, but that's what you want in this?
That's where the majority landed.
That's where we'd like to start.
Right.
Okay. And we're keeping the scale. So this scale here is that adjusted scale. That was my starting point. Can I say yes?
Baseline, yes.
I'm going slow on purpose, just to make sure the resolution is exactly what you want.
That is where...
Okay.
The discussion landed.
Then 5B. Hang on one second here. Sorry, Becky, I got... I nodded to you, didn't I? And then I didn't do this. I just started going. All right, here you go. Okay, 5B. Is... Are we wanting to go... They stay in two weeks. Is... Do we want to keep it? Whatever... The way that this was intended, the wording on this was, so we start the way we're going to start. And if it doesn't significantly increase, causing us to go higher, we would stay at age two through eighth grade until October 1st. If it goes higher, we'd probably stay there until October 1st. Do you want that in here, or do you not need that in here?
I don't think we need October 1st in there if we've adopted a scale. And we say go up faster if you need to go up, and don't come down since it's down for two weeks.
So we're taking the October 1st date out?
Yep, I agree.
Okay. And then, we were... I heard we were okay with the regardless of level, any site, the 5% and the 3%.
Yes, that's 5%.
If a building goes hot, 5% staff and student combined. We're good there?
Yes.
Okay. Then, page five is just all of the mitigation strategies. Page six, then, midway through, you'll see after athletics. Section two is the next thing you've got to... I didn't highlight it, but it's the next thing you've got to make sure you're okay with, is just like last year, the way this resolution is written, after we do this, this is the start of the school year. And unless you change your minds, because you could, you could come back to the school board meeting now in September and say, "You know what? We want to redo this resolution," or something else. But if that's not the case, then we'd operate like last year, which would mean, if the numbers go up, based on that scale that you want, I will adjust our mask requirements. If they go down, based on that scale that you've approved, that's when I'll go down.
Yes.
Just making... Again, just making sure that that's what you want. Okay. So again, I put this up on the screen so that people at home could see this as well. But that's the resolution as amended that we just talked through, which will be the resolution that you would be approving, having discussion... Making a motion on having discussion about and approving, or not approving. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, back to the agenda item of the resolution.
Right. So... Does Director Malm need to... You don't need to read it in its entirety?
Not in its entirety, based on what we... Based on what our policy is, we don't have to read it in its entirety.
Okay.
Now it would be as written.
Thank you. That's what I was waiting for. I, Stephanie Malm, introduce the following resolution and move for the adoption of the Hastings Public Schools 200 health and safety measures for the 2021 to 2022 school year, as we just discussed and as is written. I need a second.
Sub move.
Director Dave Pembel seconded the motion for adoption for the foregoing resolution. By roll call vote, Lisa Hedin?
No.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Dave Pembel?
Yes.
Becky Beisel?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
Yes.
Stephanie Malm, yes. Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted on this day, the 25th of August, 2021. Okay.
I have a question about the masks for the littles. Have we ever thought about using the clear face masks? For like the little kids that are coming into the school that have a hard time with their... I know I've read in the emails that people have said that their kids had a hard time feeling the emotions or getting the... From the teachers because of that. But they're... I've researched if there's like the clear ones. Have we ever thought about doing anything like that?
So the short answer is, we've just followed what that guidance has been to this point, which is that the clear masks would be used for specific situations like speech or things like that. That's what we... So to answer your question, that's the degree to which we...
For the littles, that would be nice that we could do something for them.
Maybe that's something to have a discussion with the staff at Tilden to see what their thoughts on that would be.
Might also be something we want to have a discussion with Mary Ellen Fox, and make sure that...
Because at the hospital, when we have people hard of hearing or deaf, we wear the clear plastic ones so that they can read our lips.
And that's what we would use, too. So any situations like that.
But I just thought for like the littles, when they can't, you know, and they only can see their eyes, they can't tell if they're smiling or if they're upset.
I think that's incredibly important.
Young kids.
The question that's going to come back is, what are you defining as littles?
Exactly. Kindergarten, I don't know, yeah.
Right? So you'd have to decide what's your cutoff point?
Becky said I pictured kindergarten and down, but... That's kind of what I envisioned.
I just thought it was something to bring up, just to look into and have some discussion.
Do some research on it. Give us an opinion.
Okay.
All right, so now we're moving into policies for approval, starting with policy 406, the public and private personnel data. Do we have a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And so now for these next ones, these are all ones that we had discussed earlier, so we can pass them as a group if we would like. So is there a motion to approve policy 203.2, policy 206, policy 206A, policy 501, policy 502, and policy 506?
Sub move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So looking at our future meetings, as we mentioned earlier, Policy Committee is meeting next week, the 2nd, at 5 o'clock. And again, all of our meetings are being held in person. And I know that there was some confusion about that this weekend due to a mistake put in Board Book. All of our meetings are in person. And so Policy Committee will be meeting on September 2nd in the district office. The Facilities Committee will be meeting September 24th in the district office, as well as October 26th. But we don't have our regular board meeting.
Yeah, we don't have a regular meeting. So we have a closed session?
Yep.
On the 8th, right, at 5:00, and then a regular work session?
Then a work session to follow at 6:00.
We have a work session on the 8th at 6:00. And then, again, the work session... Well, that location will either be in the district office or here, depending on if we are expecting a lot of people in attendance. And then on the 22nd is our regular board meeting here at 6:00.
So in a broad scope of things, when do we think we'll have our next Finance Committee meeting? Because I'm looking at Jen, but she's talking about something else. And she's like, "Oh, my God, three and a half hours in, you ask me a question."
Finance Committee meeting, next Finance Committee.
When might be a likely time for our next Finance Committee meeting? Did we... Was there a doodle... Was there a poll about that? Because...
I don't think so.
I would expect that we're going into that budget reduction cycle again, right?
Yeah.
Which put... Yeah. Cough, choke. So if we had to back into what...
We need to be sometime in September then, right?
I don't know, I'm looking at Jen, because she knows.
I was thinking originally October.
Okay.
Because that's when you'll have the September numbers.
And we'll know our student numbers.
The student numbers.
So then Becky...
Maybe that first week in October would be a good...
So Becky sent out a doodle poll for that first week in October. We got identified date. Becky, could you do that for us? Awesome, thanks.
And then we will be looking at a Finance Committee meeting to be scheduled soon. So is there anything else tonight?
Uh, no.
All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
That was fast. Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.